Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene City Council Success Agency to the Westminster Read Redmond Agency Meeting right now, 7:11 PM, Wednesday, March 24, 2021. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ta.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ho. And Councilmember Manzo.
Here.
All councilmembers present.
Thank you so much, and salute to the flat would be Councilmember Doe, invocation would be City Attorney. So, please stand.
Okay, please place your right hand over your heart. A blessed allegiance to the flat of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight. We thank you for the council, for the staff, and for the citizens that are participating. We ask that you would be here with us and help in the deliberation of these really important issues for this city, and ask that you grant wisdom so that good decisions can be made, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Doe and City Attorney. Next, we have report from City Attorney.
There's nothing to report from the closed session.
Thank you. Next, expert communication, none. Any report from City Club?
Yes, so we have a request, a staff request, to move item 6.1 to be prior to 5.3, just because we anticipate a longer discussion. So we'd like to move 6.1 ahead. And then also, our emergency services coordinator, Robert Acosta, will be providing an update regarding our, you know, regarding COVID-19.
All right, so may I have a motion to move item 6.1 forward?
Motion to move.
Motion to move. Can I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is that like go after the consent or like before, even before consent?
You can, you can do it just before 5.3. It's just, it's the last item. It's a shorter item, but we didn't necessarily want staff to have to sit through.
Okay, got it. Okay, so we have the, we have a motion and second on the floor.
Yes. So, I'm sorry, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Sorry, Vice, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Nguyen. And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you so much. And now, a report from Mr. Robert Acosta, please.
Good evening, Mayor Ta, councils, and staff. I would providing another update on Operation Independent and also the city's COVID response. I'll start with COVID. The COVID measurable metrics continue to steadily drop in the state of California and more specifically in Orange County. As discussed in previous council update, Orange County recently advanced from the purple tier into the red tier. This allowed for a return to in-restaurant dining, gyms, movie theaters, and other certain business sectors to operate at a limited capacity. And the good news is the numbers have continued to improve since then. It is reasonable to expect Orange County to advance into the orange tier, which is tier three, in the next few weeks. This will further expand certain business sectors and operational capacities. Internally, the city has been COVID-free for a little bit over a month now. The Emergency Services Section will begin meeting with city department heads and managers to establish a uniform reopening strategy for the city facilities. Myself and Kathy Thompson, our HR Director, will prepare a new information video for city employees regarding the final reopening strategy. These changes will be implemented in conjunction with the county's anticipated entry into the less restrictive orange tier sometime in early April, hopefully. Now, Operation Independence. Operation Independence, the vaccine effort in Orange County continues to gain efficiency. The vaccine supply chain is steadily improving. The county recently has seen an increased supply. This increased supply will allow the Orange County Fairgrounds Super Pod to open March 31st. That gives Orange County three operational super pods. The Orange County Fairgrounds will be the biggest of the three, and it will be capable of delivering 10,000 vaccines a day. I'm very happy to report that since our last, my last council update, Westminster has held two vaccination clinics within the city, specifically in our community center. These mobile pods were possible through a partnership with local business partners, the OCFA, the local healthcare agency, city employees, and community volunteers. These mobile pods were held Sunday, the 14th, and the, the second pod was held just yesterday. The pods primarily targeted eligible Westminster residents, and this was achieved by searching for all eligible seniors in Westminster that were registered into Athena by using, by sorting them through the zip codes. Additionally, the Community Service Section had compiled a list of over 400 senior citizens that live within the city. Every eligible Westminster senior that was on the list or registered in Athena was offered a vaccine over the last 10 days. And collectively, the city staff is proud to say we were able to vaccinate a combined 981 individuals during these two events. The success of these events was due to the partnerships we have with the various stakeholders, and importantly, the volunteers from many different disciplines. They worked tirelessly to get the job done, and I want to thank them personally. And also, thank you to our city management team and the city council for allowing us to aggressively pursue these mobile pods. So thank you for that support. For the residents that still need a vaccine, Athena is still the best way to virtually get in line for their turn. There is confidence in the IMT, in the incident manager team and the healthcare agency that the vaccine available, availability will open up for all in the very near future. The testing in Orange County continues to be robust, and the city of Westminster continues to host a testing clinic at City Hall. Testing is available there five days a week, and signups are requested and can be done at the, on the Orange County Healthcare website. The Orange County Healthcare Agency and Operation Independence continue to provide us updates via conference calls three times a week, and we actively are participating in these calls. That's the end of my report.
Thank you so much for your report. Any question or concerns from member on the City Council?
I had a question.
Please.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you for your presentation. It's always really helpful, all the information you present us. I had a question as far as, is the effort to bring the vaccines to the low-serving communities, color, as far as if we've already heard of the inequities on the people receiving vaccines. Do you know anything about the effort to kind of address that?
For the, if I understand you correctly, for the delivering the vaccines to the underrepresented communities.
Correct.
What you're asking about. So there's been 400 zip codes that were identified in the states that are underrepresented, and, and that's the health equity metric. And that is, we leaned on that to, to help get us those two mobile pods. So in Orange County, the, 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 the three zip codes that fall into that 400 are Santa Ana, Anaheim, and Garden Grove. We're just outside of that metric, but we were still able to lobby hard enough to, to get the vaccine for our city. But yeah, the, the county's done a very good job, and they've delivered. I haven't, I don't have the, the most recent numbers, but as of last week, they've delivered over 2 million vaccines to those underrepresented communities.
Thank you.
Any other question? If not, thank you so much for your report. Really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right, next, we have oral communication.
Yes, this is the time of the meeting where members of the public may address the city council. Members of the public have five minutes to speak on agenda and non-agenda items, except for public hearing items. We have two advanced requests to speak, and then, of course, anyone who would like to address the city council may do so by raising your hand in, in Zoom, and I will call upon you. So first speaker is Jay Kumar. Let me find Jay here. Hello, Jay.
Hi, good, good evening, everybody. Hello?
You can go ahead.
Oh, you guys can hear me, okay. Um, I just wanted to talk about, um, so I used to work as a general manager with the city of Long Beach, and the city of Long Beach had a big problem for the homeless situation. City of Long Beach decided to buy three of the major hotel we had. And, um, since I was working as a backseat general manager, I was involved in their foundation. I helped the city to transition from the hotel to the homeless housing. And I see a lot of homeless people investments, and I just wanted to see if, um, City of Westminster on the Orange County, if I can help in any way.
I really appreciate your concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next speaker is Said Shah. Let me find Said here. Hello, Said, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
I'm gonna try to be as positive as I can. The first item I want to talk about is a great job that the Westminster Police Department has been doing for us. These have been really difficult times for the entire city, the people, and going through a lot of work. You know, some of the friends I have, in fact, one business, hard-working Vietnamese, American family, son died, and what we had to do to make sure that the mother was safe. But the police really has kept us all together, and we can't thank them enough. A small community of us just sent out 12,000 cards on classifying them as our heroes for Westminster. So, the police department, we look up to you, we thank you, and keep doing the wonderful job, and we can't really thank you enough for that. The, the second point I wanted to say is that sometimes on the oral communication, a lot of people talk, and usually, there's very little feedback from the council. It usually is, okay, thank you, and forget about it. So we are hoping that there would be some feedback on some key comments as they see fit. The last item I had was, I'm very happy to announce that I was able to stop the class action lawsuit that was started, especially in the, in the West End, with a lot of businesses. There was about this, this law firm had proposed to us that you neglected city on, especially District One, was being neglected, and all the money, 4.6 million, and 25 years tax break was all going towards one end. But based on the recent development, especially getting an ethical city manager, we, I felt that it was not appropriate. And, boy, the evidence that they had collected was tremendous. And putting each council member in a day and a half of deposition was, as, as they had proposed, I did not feel that we need to tear apart the city, but work together. So I'm very pleased to, to hear that we have done that. In all effect, I just want to say, please be fair to all areas, not only one. You know, like Katrina called me to have lunch. She said, can I have lunch with you? Now she's the supervisor. I'm happy for her. She want to talk about homelessness and other issues. And those kind of things are very rewarding, where we can make some good positive changes. So I thank you all, you know, and I know that the city of Westminster has, what, about 100 million in its, in its bank, and about 25 million coming with this new relief bill. Please spend it wisely and be fair to the areas that have been neglected. That's all. Thank you so much, and, and city staff, keep up the good work.
Thank you. So at this time, we have additional speakers. Next speaker is Toon Nguyen. Go ahead.
Oh, good evening. Did you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Toon Nguyen. I'm a resident of the city, and I also have business interest in the city of Westminster as well. And today, I would like to comment on the Civic Center Development Project. You know, I, I've been visiting the city hall quite often, actually, because I'm a civil engineer, so I have worked on many projects located in the city. So I've been to this, not only city hall of Westminster, but also to many city halls around the area as well. So to, I would like to make two points today. When I read about this project, a first point about a city hall, I, I always wonderly how outdated the city hall is compared to many others. And I believe the city hall was built maybe 50 years ago about. And it currently has no fire sprinkler system, and it's not earthquake-proof, I believe. So I think that's a major risk to the city staff, visitors, constituents, and anyone who may involve. And, you know, I've worked in many project in the city, and I understand that the city has building code, fire code, and they are very strict about it. And the city would require compliance from mostly all projects that I've worked on, even for single-family homes, for example. So to me, it's quite unfathomable that the city hall is now without a fire sprinkler system. And from my professional experience of building that old without a sprinkler system, and now you need to install one, it's gonna cost a lot of money. So maybe it's better to build a new one. So I think this project has very good point. The second point I would like to make here is the space in front of city hall. It's a big parking lot, and it always seems to be deserted and underutilized. So, you know, for a spacious parking lot like that, it's not approachable. It's not friendly to residents. So, you know, I, I think we, we need to have a new plan to make that area more friendly to the residents. So the new civic center would attract more people, more visitors, and that in turn would bring more business to the area and the city. So, yeah, I fully support a new civic center with a fresh, new, and modern face to the city. So, and thanks, and those are the only two points I have today. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Nick.
Yes, thank you. I'm here to support the Civic Center project. I've lived in Westminster my entire life, and after looking over the project, I think that creating the Civic Center Mall is a great idea. The current Civic Center building and its surroundings are outdated and don't have much to offer to someone who is my age. I'm a Gen Z-er, and there are no places in Westminster where I can hang out with my friends outside. There are no nice parks, and out of all the places, I've never gone to the city hall area to just relax and enjoy the nature. There are also no places to grab a cup of coffee and just walk around. I believe this project will provide a great place for the Westminster community to hang out and gather. The project will make this a really great destination choice for me and the rest of the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Loanne Doe.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Loanne, and I am also a resident of Westminster, and I do support the proposed project with a new city hall, a new park, or open space area for kids and adults alike to relax and play, and a much-needed additional housing. I am a mother of four grown children, and we have been looking for an additional house or a townhome, a small house, but it is very difficult. We have been looking for the last two years, and it's either too expensive, or too many buyers are trying to get the same house. The additional housing with affordable housing would give us a chance, a better chance at least. And another thing I want to note that we drive by the empty parking lot practically every day, and I feel that a new park or, or a relaxing, relaxation area would greatly enhance our community. And in addition to that, the city hall, in my opinion, is the center or the heart of the city of Westminster. And we should have a new and a safer place for people to feel at ease when they come into the city hall, because I read where there are no fire sprinklers, and it hasn't been updated since 1971. So to me, that would make me very nervous to come into the city hall. So I hope that we will, the city will approve this new project. I think it would, the entire project would make the city of Westminster a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jody Boyd.
Hi, good evening, everybody. This is Jody. I have two passions for Westminster. One is our homeless population, and the other are our seniors. I'm very opposed to anything that will disrupt our senior center or any of the services provided at the senior center, and also parking. If you're, you're a senior, or I know many of your parents are, you can understand that it's not easy to get around. You, it's preferred to park closer to the senior center, and it would really be almost mean to expect that all of our seniors are gonna park over at the parking garage and then walk over to the senior center. I mean, that's just mean and wrong, especially when we do, and we always have provided parking. This is a time when we should be supporting our seniors, understand that our senior center is a gathering place, and that we provide vital services there. I have a general question for probably Marwan, and i-if it's true, I mean, people are saying this, our, our city hall does not have fire sprinklers. How can that be? I would think that that would be a major code violation, and that we should have been remediating that a long time ago. Likewise, with the claim that, you know, it's not the most sturdy building in case there's an earthquake. Well, I lived in San Francisco, and I know all the remediation and proactive efforts that can be done for a standing building to shore it up. And so I don't know if these are truths or fallacies, but I, I don't think we need to tear down the whole civic center, especially when it's gonna be meaning taking services and parking away from seniors and students. Onto the homeless issue, which I'm very involved with, and I'm very glad that the gentleman from CityNet is here. I do have one pain point, and that is the monthly report. It's really not telling us a lot, such as, on the current month's report, it says that a total of six people exited the streets. But when we look at our, our highlights, it doesn't say where these people were within our city. If we knew that, then we would know what our heat maps are. And also, I noticed that for January and February, our numbers, our encounters have dropped dramatically. What does that correlate to? Are we truly getting people off of the streets and the help and the housing they need? Just, you know, it doesn't make sense that, you know, in the winter months, the people aren't out there. I'd like to have a better idea of how many encounters it's taking before somebody will accept help. And that is pretty much it. So anyway, I'm here to support our seniors and our homeless citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Scott Waitrose.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you for having me. I appreciate your service. I'm a homeowner, as well as a business owner and a retired reserve firefighter, and I just wanted to state my approval for the new civic center. In looking at the plans and reviewing everything, it appears that it would be just a mistake to not move forward. I, I just can't understand how, with the proposed finances that would be, that would not be taxable finances, that would allow the building to be built and funded, I, you know, I just can't understand why, why you wouldn't move forward, for a few reasons. Just the legacy, I can't imagine that the council members wouldn't want to be a part of a legacy to build something new and spectacular for the community, as well as to help your, your arena numbers as well with the new proposed residential properties that are being proposed for this plan. The open space is gonna be fantastic, and I think it'll draw so many people to, you know, the open air and, and the opportunity to get out of their homes, especially once COVID ends, and enjoy the, the beautiful environment that I, I believe that I've seen, that's been presented. And also obsolete, the obsolete building with the, as mentioned before, not even being aware that there weren't fire sprinklers. I, that just, when I was listening to the speakers before, that just, that kind of scares me. I do, I'll just leave it with this. I, I had a friend that was actually in, in a very bad accident. It was the water tank that actually burst, and I remember talking with him, and I believe there were a few different things that the city had the opportunity to do with that water tank, and it was, it was either remove it, or replace it, or just leave it alone. And unfortunately, he was badly injured and disabled for about six months after that accident. He was a firefighter that was actually in a fire station at the time. So I just, I think that if you have an opportunity to build a new building and, and create new open space and a, a wonderful community center, and also just for the employees that will have a great place to work. I know as a business owner, I, I try to provide the best office space for my employees, because a happy employee that's looking forward to come to a nice place and to have the opportunity to enjoy a, a new building that they could call their own and begin a new legacy, I just think is really important. So thank you for listening. I do appreciate your time and your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Terry Rains.
Good evening. Item 3.9 is the February City Net Report, which again shows low outreach numbers. I have repeatedly I have repeatedly requested that the city ask for modifications to this report to make it more useful. I'd be happy to email those suggestions to the city's point person on the homeless issue, but based on. The discussion at the last meeting, no one knows who that person is. Item five point two is the draft twenty twenty-one, twenty-two annual action plan and CDBG funding requests. Sadly, only fifteen percent of CDBG funds can go to service-based programs. Calculated only on the current entitlement, not on any carryover funds. Again, it would be great if staff could provide a comprehensive report of last year's programs to ensure the best use of these funds going forward. For example, how many code inspections were done last year under the multifamily inspection program? What was the outcome of those inspections? What was there a notable arrest of decline in the targeted area? How much revenue did the city collect in related funds and was it recorded as credits against CDBG expenses or as general fund revenue? Were the property owners provided detailed information about the multifamily rehab program? I ask this because zero owners applied for this assistance, zero. Perhaps the city should expand the inspection and rehab programs to include single-family homes in the targeted area. Both rented and owned, in addition to multifamily properties to ensure all the funds are used and residents benefit each year. The city should prioritize housing and community needs over street improvements for these funds. Code of Federal Regulation Section five seventy dot two oh seven prohibits. Use of these funds for general government expenses or maintenance and repair of public facilities. I'm not saying the proposed uses are in violation, but the street improvement request does say it's to achieve citywide goals. One point four million dollar home funds are being allocated to an affordable transitional or permanent rental housing project, which is great. As long as a project actually materializes. Item five point three is the civic center project update. Steve Sheldon failed to submit any information in time for the staff report. He got his presentation for tonight to the city clerk after four P M. Today, and I received a copy not until seven P M. So kind of hard to review and comment on it. He refuses to abide by standard professional practices and laws. On March sixteenth, he sent an email and blind copied the entire city council requesting a private meeting with them. To provide an update on the project prior to tonight's meeting, which would be a serious Brown Act violation. I continue to obtain copies of emails between Sheldon and city staff and share them with the community and the press. Sheldon continues to be rude and pushy in his emails. One does not have to be a psychiatrist to recognize narcissistic personality disorder. Defined as a pattern of self-centered arrogant thinking and behavior and a lack of empathy and consideration for other people. Other descriptions include cocky, manipulative, selfish, patronizing, and demanding. I dare anyone to read the emails I have read and not see a behavioral pattern indicative of NPD. The pro forma for site B plan in the staff report is outdated. An unofficial updated version was submitted as late communications for the November eleventh council meeting showing higher project costs. Fourteen point five seven five million versus thirteen six point six nine five million. The cost for the modified site plan B are even higher at fifteen point seven eight five million. The modified site plan B shows an additional fourteen townhomes now up to a hundred and seventeen. CFD revenue for this option is two hundred thousand dollars lower. A CFD will assess a special annual tax on the townhome owners. Emails reference a Plan C, but I don't know what that is. Sheldon continues to lie about having a five million dollar commitment from Coastline Community College for parking. And he still claims one million dollars of project revenue will come from park grants, naming rights, grants, et cetera. He refuses to provide required information even after multiple requests. Emails reveal Sheldon now wants to use some of the city's bond proceeds. Received years ago to fund the new police department building, even though he has stated repeatedly that only project-related funds will be required for this project. It is time for this council to wake up and smell reality. Per section forty of the third amendment to the E and A, if substantial performer. Performance of the developer obligations has not been undertaken and performed, the E and A shall be terminated. The task status summary clearly shows Sheldon has failed to deliver on virtually all of his E and A obligations for. Over three and a half years now. So why the hell, sorry. Haven't you terminated this E and A yet? Redevelopment of the civic center might be a good idea, but not with this guy. It is your job as elected officials to protect the city's assets and make decisions that benefit the residents of this city. Not yourselves or some shady developer. Lastly, no new updates tonight on the ongoing legal matters I reported on at the last meeting, but there is one new matter to report tonight. Multiple formal protests have been filed with the A B C against the issuance of the type. Forty-two liquor license to O C Entertainment slash David Voe. So stay tuned, everyone. I'll see you in three weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Davor Amereska.
Good evening, everyone. I actually live across Westminster. On the north side of Westminster, between Westminster and Trask, east of Beach. And I walk my dogs over to the civic center. Probably four times a week at, at least at different times of day. And for the people who stated that the parking lot is empty as they drive by. It absolutely is, and that is because of COVID. So prior to COVID, the parking lot was relatively full on a regular basis. Now, I have lived here since twenty, since the year two thousand. Have had dogs for the last fifteen years and that is a regular walking place for me. So I see what the difference is there. And I agree with Jody. That our senior center, we need to have parking close by because a lot of people have to use walkers. And we need to not disrupt our seniors, of which I am one. I am over sixty-five. I would love to be able to utilize some of the services of the senior center for exercises and for. Get togethers, you know, once COVID has become a past. Issue with us. The other thing is, we do have a number of people that enjoy. The garden area and the rose bushes and everything because I see people out walking every single day when I am there. That have nothing to do with the federal courthouse that is right there. So there are a number of people that are already utilizing it. I do agree with Terry that redoing some part of the. Of that area could be very beneficial for the city. But having done my own research on Mr. Sheldon. I don't believe that he is the right person to do that job. And I will close with that respectfully to Davor Amereska, Westminster.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Lan Chao.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Lan Chao. My house is on Tiffany Drive in the city of Westminster. I'm calling in tonight, this evening to express my support for the new civic center projects. As a realtor, I can tell you that the demand for affordable housing. In the city of Westminster is great. The new affordable houses will ease the demand, not, not only will ease the demand, but also meet the state mandate. Coda that we desperately need to meet. As a homeowner in the city of Westminster, I would like to see a safe, community-oriented project like this move forward. From what I understand. There will be no taxpayer dollars from the general fund will be spent on this project. And I also understand that this project does not touch the senior center. That is parking for the seniors in front of the seniors center. I encourage the city council to support and approve this project. If I were you, a member of the city council. I would like to leave a legacy of beautify the city of Westminster for many generations to come. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Next speaker is. C. Green.
Kathy Green?
Yes, it's.
Okay.
See green on there. I apologize.
My name is Kathy Green and I live in Huntington Beach. I've been an elected, an Orange County elected official for the past twenty years. I have served as mayor of Huntington Beach. And a member of the Board of Directors of the Orange County Transportation Authority and the Orange County Sanitation District. For the past eleven years, I have been, had the honor of serving as director and president of the Orange County Water District. During these past twenty years, I have interacted with Steve Sheldon. On many different occasions and for many different reasons. Steve Sheldon has always been professional. Honored, honest and distinct thoughtful. He is, has an open mind and flexible to suggestions and change. He has always been a gentleman to me and to others that I know have worked with him. The person I heard speaking earlier does not know Steve Sheldon. I know he has. I know she has never spoken to Steve, let alone met with him or tried to get to know him. It is unfortunate that such untruthful statements are made. Steve is strong-willed and is not timid about sharing his opinion. When he sees that something is not being done properly, he will always be unafraid to speak his mind. The Orange County Water District has a diverse board of directors that come from many different perspectives. I have seen Steve work with his colleagues to find agreement on various issues. You can tell Steve when he is wrong and he will listen to you. And find out why you feel that way. Our board recently elected Steve to be our board president. Because they have faith in him as a leader and he is actually a visionary. Who likes to push the envelope to advance the water district. Steve is viewed as a fair person who will treat all with dignity and respect. I suggest that maybe people actually get to know Steve and sit down and talk to him. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. This would be the last call for speakers. If any member of the public would like to speak, please raise your hand. Give you a few seconds. Okay, now, Mike Chung. Go ahead. Mike?
Yeah, do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Mike Chu. And mob, mob will call me Mike Hung Dao. That's my nickname. It was a surprise that I have this, I'm talking about the A D U. Okay, I'm only in the right way or not, I just heard about this public about an hour ago.
Yeah, so I'm sorry to interrupt you. So the A D U item is under public hearing. So you'll have to wait to comment on that when it's time for the public hearing. It's the only. Yeah, it's the only item that you can't speak about right now.
Oh, too early then.
Yeah, a little, a little early, but when it comes time, we'll announce, you know, public comments for, for the public hearing. So. So just stay tuned.
Okay, so it's the way. Thank you.
All right, so do we have any speaker or e? Comments?
I have no additional speakers for communication.
All right, with that, I'd like to close all the communication. Next, we have consent calendar or matter listener to consent calendar. I consider routine. And maybe approved by a single motion followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless member of the city council or staff. Request that specific item be removed from the consent calendar for a separate this action or discussion.
Request to pull three point nine and ask the. City Net, City Net or staff for more report on that.
All right, so I, I'd like to pull item three point two, item three point three. The reason I pull these two item because I live within five hundred feet from those two property.
Okay.
I would like to pull, I would like to pull item Treasury Report three point eight.
Three point eight. Okay, so right now I have. We're going to be approving the consent calendar except for items three point two, three point three, three point eight and three point nine.
All right, may I have a motion? Move to approve. All right, we have the motion to approve. And we have a second, but item three point two, three point three, three point eight and three point nine.
That's correct. Okay, so that was a motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Doe. So Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho? Councilmember Ho? Okay. Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
So I believe that Vice Mayor have to conduct for item three point two and three point. Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to. Ask. The staff to go ahead and, and who, who called for three point two? That's you, right?
It was the mayor because he needed to recuse himself from three point two and three point three.
He has his house. He lives there.
Yeah.
So do I ask the staff to go ahead and present that?
You, you don't need to unless you would like to.
You have, if you, if you don't have any question, if you don't have any question, then I, you know, I move to approve three point two.
Okay, so motion made.
They're second to that.
Yeah, or you pull the, let's, let's, let's see the staff report. How's that?
Yes, good evening. Yes, I can do that, Mayor and the council members. Let me just get the item here. This is, this is an acceptance of an easement deed for a development project. The project is located at seven, seven, six, one, six, three, sixteenth Street. The project requested to build four new apartments on that lot. And that lot is, happens to be adjacent to an alley. Our alleys currently, the old alleys were fifteen feet wide. The new code and the new standards call for a twenty feet wide. So every time a project like this comes in, we ask the adjacent owner to dedicate two and a half feet from each side. So this project, we're asking the developer to dedicate two and a half feet from that side. And that's, that's really it. And the reason, the reason we ask for that, once we get all the right away for both sides, the city will go ahead and widen the alley to twenty foot alley instead of fifty.
Okay, is, is there any other questions on that? If not, I have, I have make motion to approve.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor, can I ask a question? Yeah, thank you. The widening, you just mentioned the widening of the alley. Who covers that cost for the winding of the alley?
It, it, it depends really, or depends on the project. If it's, if it's a one single project that is like, they say the lot is forty feet lot. We don't expect the developer to widen it right now because the alley is going to be a zigzag. So, but, but if a developer is coming and building along the entire length of the alley. Then yes, we make it part of the project to, for the developer to widen the entire alley. But for one single project, we don't do that usually. We just take, we just get the right way and then wait for the future because it takes, takes many years really. To acquire the entire right away from both sides. And that's why we just get the right way now and sit on it. But again, if, let's say somebody comes with a big development. They're gonna do both sides, then yes, we acquire dedication on both sides and they will require them to widen the alley.
And so that, in that case, the developer will cover the cost.
Yes, yes. And, and what we have been doing lately, because alley is under the subdivision map act. Are really there to serve the rears of certain properties that they face like major arterials. If a development comes in and that alley is no longer needed for access. We usually abandon the alley and let, let the, let the, the project have the alley. So we, we don't really like alleys unless if we have to. But, but in cases like this, we just take the right way and widen it later on.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Yeah, can we continue to hear the staff report on 3.8 and 3.9 and then we can approve it at the same time?
I, I guess, I guess we need to look at the 3.2 and 3.3. And then after that, 3.8, the mayor will come back and, and then conduct meeting.
No, I, I, I think we should take a vote on 3.2 first. Yeah.
So we have a motion and second on the floor, so go ahead and roll call please.
Yes, so we had a motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Ho earlier. That's to accept the subject document and authorize the city clerk to record the deed with the county recorder's office. So Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Yeah, that motion's gonna carry 401 with Mayor Ta abstaining.
Okay, I assume that the 3.3 acceptance of easement deed for 7742 on 15th Street, probably the same story, right? So a, any, any member of council member have any question on that? If not, I move to approve.
My second.
Okay, motion is second on the floor, roll call please.
Okay, so that was a motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Ho. That's also to accept the subject document, authorize city clerk to record the deed with the county recorder's office. Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho? Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Yeah, that motion carries 401 with Mayor Ta abstaining.
Okay, we can return it to Mayor Ta.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nguyen, for next item, 3.8, Treasury Report. So may I have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is a cash and investment report for February of 2021. At the end of the month, the city had 101,150,470 dollars in cash and investments and the successor agency had a little over 8 million. Investments under management by Chandler Asset Management totaled 58.4 million for the city. Between the city and successor agency, we've had 36.1 million in life and a little over 9 million in bond funds. Are there any questions that I could answer?
Is there any question or concerns from member of the city council? All right, I see none, so I move to approve.
Second it.
We have a motion and second on the floor.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Yes, that's a motion made by Mayor Ta, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen, and it's to receive and file the report. Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, next item, 3.9, CityNet Homeless Services, that's more report. So may I invite interim with police chief? Chief, are you there? Hello, chief, how are you today? I think you have to unmute. Thank you, chief.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Tretah and fellow council members and city staff and others. Good evening. Yes, we have this item here to provide information to the city and to our community about the efforts with our homeless. We do have a representative from CityNet that will be more than happy to provide some more details that I know everyone is looking forward to hearing. So with that, I return it over to our representative from CityNet.
I thank you, interim chief, and thank you to Mayor and City Council and city staff for inviting us into this meeting. I'm happy to answer questions. I, I, if, if you permit me, I, you know, just like to go over a couple of, you know, kind of an overview of, of how it's going from CityNet's perspective and give you kind of an update of, you know, the work that we've been doing in Westminster and some of the things that are, that are happening and that are impacting homelessness across the central spa and across Orange County. As you know, you have my February 2021 homeless services dashboard report of our outreach and engagement efforts in the city. Just as kind of a reminder, the, the, you know, our goal across, you know, the entirety of our contract has been to achieve 235 street exits. We're at 309. Of those street exits, 31% have been exited to permanent destinations, which is a really strong number. Typically, we see around 20% going to permanent destinations, about 80% going to, you know, temporary shelters and other destinations that HUD would classify as temporary. We also see about 30% of the exits in Westminster being children. So, so a lot of families, family homelessness impacting the city. And we're fortunate to be able to have relationships with, with family shelters and, and get those families connected to shelter very quickly. We, I was looking at the numbers today, we're, we've, we've achieved about an 87% retention rate. So if you look at the street exits overall, about 87% of those, well, a little, little over 87% of those that have been exited from the streets have remained off the streets. So that, you know, the other side of looking at that is a 13% recidivism rate, which is well within the, you know, the HUD guidelines for street outreach. HUD has a standard of 80% retention for street outreach, street exits. And so we're well above that, that threshold and within the range of, of what we typically see in Orange County. So there is some, like with any kind of social services, human services, there is, there is some recidivism that's a normal part of what we do. Obviously, with those that, that fall out of, of housing, we work very hard to reconnect them to shelter and services, so we never give up on anybody. But that is, that is what we see. And we're fairly confident in, in those, in that retention number just because we log every, you know, every client interaction and every new interaction. So if we, if we see somebody on the streets homeless that we've housed previously, we know that we can, we can track that. And not only in Westminster, but because of our work in outreach and engagement all across the central spa, the north spa, all those cities, and even some south spa cities. If we happen to cross a homeless neighbor in one of those other cities that had, that we had previously housed in Westminster, we can track them that way. And then finally, when we conduct homeless censuses in the city of Westminster, and of which we're engaged in one currently, and I'll speak more on that in a second. But when we conduct those censuses, we always take those lists of unsheltered homeless neighbors and then compare them against our housing list. So that, that, the, it's an ongoing process of, of keeping track of those that have been housed and comparing those against our, the lists of people that we come across who are unsheltered. I referred briefly to the, to the homeless census. We, we did one in 2017 for the city of Westminster. At that time, in that homeless census, our report back to the city was 126 homeless neighbors. Then in January 2019 was the point in time count, the Orange County Point in Time Count. And in that point in time count, the number for Westminster is 159. CityNet again did a homeless census for the city in December of 2019. And at that time, the number had risen all the way to 213. And then just, just this week, we are engaged in a homeless census. We're actually right in the middle of, yesterday morning, our teams went out and tomorrow night will be the second, the second census event. We mapped the city in partnership with your, with your law enforcement. We actually took advantage of some of the, the work that we had done in preparation for the 2021 point in time count, which was canceled because of COVID. But prior to that being canceled, CityNet, who was the contracted agency with the county, was able to work with your homeless liaison officers in Westminster to map out the city and to, to look for hotspots and areas where homeless neighbors tend to congregate so that we, if we had done the point in time count, we would be able to visit those areas and get an accurate count. Again, that was canceled because of COVID, but here we are in March of 2021 and we're leveraging that, that information. And I, you know, so we, we're halfway through essentially. We mapped the city, we, our teams went out, four teams of two went out with, with law enforcement on each team, two to three people in each team, and, and covered all the maps on the first morning of the census. And the number that we, that you can write down in pencil, because, you know, this is all preliminary data. The data hasn't even been, you know, deduplicated and obviously we're going out against tomorrow night. The, the, the results from the first, the morning were 75 records or 75 individuals. So, you know, nobody knows what's gonna happen. We could go and encounter lots of other homeless neighbors tomorrow night. But having done more than 30 of these censuses for cities across, you know, four southern California counties, you know, our experience tells us that the final number's gonna be somewhere probably between 100 and 125, somewhere in there, which again would be down from December 2019 and down from January 2019 and potentially even below what we found in 2017. So again, write that in pencil. I'm just giving you kind of the, as we, as we see it, real time data analysis and results could change. Obviously, after, after tomorrow night, our team will get to work in compiling all the data, deduplicating the data, cleaning it up and compiling the report. So we look forward to talking about that with you. I think in terms of some of the trends, obviously COVID has impacted everything with homeless services in the past year. I am very proud of our team at CityNet and, and more broadly, all the other nonprofit agencies that, that, the homeless services nonprofit agencies and law enforcement and cities, cities, city agencies that are impacted by homelessness in a time of unprecedented and uncertainty. You know, our team has got up every day and, and gone to work, put their personal health on the line and tried to achieve outcomes on behalf of homeless neighbors. And again, I, I think that's true of CityNet, but I think that's also true of all the other agencies in Orange County. I think everybody really leaned in in times that in the early days, it was very uncertain and, and very challenging and a lot of fear and a lot of unknowns. And of course, we're, we're not out of the woods yet, but our staff are, have, you know, are, are trained. They practice safe practices with, with, you know, with distancing and with the use of personal protective equipment. So that, that has impacted things. Now, COVID has also created opportunities for homeless neighbors that might not have otherwise have existed. So funding has come down from the, from the state and from federal government that, that otherwise would not have been there. And I think because in Orange County, there's a relatively strong continuum of care of agencies that work together and there's a framework through which money can be received and distributed. Orange County is, has, has achieved good results. And so you've seen things like, you know, the, the Operation Room Key, which opened up motel rooms to vulnerable homeless neighbors who would, who were deemed to be vulnerable to COVID if they were to, if they were to be impacted by it. And that, not only has that helped in the short term, get lots of people safely off the streets so that they can socially distance and they can isolate, but also many of those are being connected to long-term vouchers. So there will be some people who left the streets because of COVID, entered a motel, and then from that motel will be connected to a long-term voucher and will have permanent housing subsidized for them for the rest of their lives. In addition to that, our work certainly has been, has been benefited and our results have been impacted by new shelters that have opened up across the region. And I'm thinking of shelters in particular in Huntington Beach and Costa Mesa, the Yale Shelter in Santa Ana, the Link Shelter in Santa Ana, and the Testan Temporary Emergency Shelter in Testan. So those are just shelters that have opened in the central service planning area, but also up in the north service planning area, there's been lots of shelters opened up there, Fullerton and Placentia, Glenna Park, Anaheim have all invested in shelters over the last several years. And so that has created beds for people. The next thing on the horizon, of course, is sort of twofold. One is to anticipate how homelessness may be impacted by, by, by people who are suffering economically because of COVID, people who have lost their jobs, who've struggled to pay their rents, who are receiving subsidies now. But if and when, you know, well, it's really when, you know, moratoriums on foreclosures, those are gonna come to an end at some point. And subsidies at some point will, will, will run, run dry. And so the, the homeless system as a whole is kind of racing for impact and trying to anticipate ways to head that off, and those efforts are ongoing. And then the second thing that we, that we're, that we're looking to, of course, is the long-term investment in permanent supportive housing. So the, the county has come a long way in the last four or five years in, in investing in an emergency shelter system to get people off the streets where they can stabilize, where they can begin to work on long-term plans. And now there's a strong shelter system in place. And then, of course, the next horizon from a systemic standpoint is to invest in permanent supportive housing so that there can be system flow from the streets through the emergency shelters and into permanent housing. So those are, those are efforts and there's lots of signs of hope with that as well. But with that, I will conclude my report and I'm happy to take any questions that any of you may have.
Thank you so much for your report, we appreciate that. Any question or concerns from member of the city council?
Move to receive and file?
Second? Roll call vote please.
Okay, that was a motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta to receive and file the report. Councilmember Do?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bay.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next, public hearings.
Okay, due to COVID-19 restrictions, changes have been made to the public hearing process in order to ensure members of the public may participate remotely. Members of the public had the opportunity to email their comments to the city up to 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Anyone who would like to speak to the city council via Zoom may raise their hands during the meeting. Speakers will receive five minutes to speak on the public hearing item.
Thank you, right now an open public hearing, item 4.1, case number 20, 2100, 26 and all in and amending the Westminster Municipal Code to regulate accessory dwelling unit, ADU, junior accessory dwelling unit and related park fees. So may I have a staff report first?
May, may, and, hold on for a minute, may and the city attorney. I'd like to recuse myself, I don't know what point that you want me to just to say it, but I, I go ahead and say it right now. I'd like to recuse myself of this item because I'm thinking of doing an ADU later on and I think it's best, it's best for me that I shouldn't be involved in my 70 decision making. So I will recuse myself of that.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, so may I have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Alexis Middle, Community Development Director. We're very pleased to be able to bring this item before you this evening. This is, this is a hefty item. There's a lot of technical information that's been packed into the staff report. So we have a great team here to present to you tonight. We have Steve Ratke, our planning manager. We also have Alice Tu, who's our assistant planner or associate planner, pardon me, who's gonna be making a presentation to you this evening. And then we also have our assistant city attorney, Scott Porter, who's been working very closely with us to, to bring this ordinance to fruition. So we, we're all here. We're excited to answer your questions, but right now I'm gonna turn it over to Steve to start the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'd like to provide a very brief background on this ordinance. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Alice, who will summarize the contents of the recommended ordinance. So very quickly, if we could switch to the PowerPoint. And go to the next slide, please. As you may recall, the, the term accessory dwelling unit really showed up in 2017 when the governor signed the first, I guess you could say, batch of ADU laws. They took effect, and they were signed in 2016, took effect in 2017. Since that time, the governor, most recently in 2019, signed another batch of ADU bills which took effect in January 2020. In response to the latest round of ADU laws, the Mayor and Council adopted an urgency ordinance in December 2019. That urgency ordinance is currently in effect and provides the current regulations that the city uses to administer ADUs. That urgency ordinance is currently in effect and provides the current regulations that the city uses to administer ADUs. In two thousand and twenty, staff began the process of drafting of permanent ordinance that would eventually replace the current urgency ordinance. At the same time, staff was processing ADU applications throughout the time that the city hall was closed due to the pandemic and taking note of how the urgency ordinance could be improved to create a greater efficiency in the ADU review process. In October twenty twenty, staff presented to the mayor and council some options that the mayor and council could consider involving ADU provisions and could possibly incorporate into a permanent ordinance. At the conclusion of our presentation, the mayor and council voted to form an ad hoc committee comprised of two council members to work with staff on the permanent ordinance. The last October, staff met with the members of the ad hoc committee, also consulted with staff at the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, worked and also worked to create a draft ordinance that is easier to understand and will also reduce the processing time for both staff and applicants. Draft ordinance was prepared that reflected input from the ad hoc committee, staff at HCD, the city's legal council, and of course, staff, the city staff. On March third, two thousand and twenty-one, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider that draft ordinance. And after deliberation, the Planning Commission voted five-zero to recommend the draft ordinance be brought before the mayor and council with three changes. The first was to eliminate a provision that would allow for a junior accessory dwelling unit to be constructed inside of an attached garage. The second was to eliminate a provision that would establish a maximum number of bedrooms. And the third was to reduce the maximum size of ADUs to no more than the maximum size allowed by state law. So before the mayor and council tonight is the Planning Commission's recommended version of the ordinance, provided as attachment one in your packet. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Alice, who will summarize the major contents of the proposed ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor Todd and members of the city council. I will be providing a summary of the draft ADU ordinance. I will be mainly highlighting some of the key changes from the urgency ordinance to the proposed ordinance as recommended by the Planning Commission. The first item pertains to JDUs. The JDUs are defined as accessory dwelling units that are no greater than five hundred square feet that are contained within the primary, within the single-family residence. And so this is not inclusive of the garage. So our ADU urgency ordinance currently does not allow for you to convert, create a JDU from a garage conversion. The Planning Commission has specifically recommended that this provision remain unchanged, that the JDUs will continue to not be allowed to be created from a garage conversion, and that only ADUs are allowed to be created from a garage conversion. The next item pertains to the maximum floor area for attached ADUs. And in attached, currently, the maximum floor area is the greater of eight hundred fifty square feet for an ADU with zero to one bedrooms, a thousand square feet for an ADU with two bedrooms, or fifty percent the size of the existing primary dwelling, so it could be half the size of your existing house. The Planning Commission has specifically recommended that we not allow any more than the minimum that is required by state. So therefore, this is the, what's being proposed is that the maximum floor area for an attached ADU is eight hundred fifty square feet for an ADU with zero to one bedrooms and a thousand square feet for an ADU with two or more bedrooms. The next item pertains to maximum floor areas for detached JDUs. Currently, the maximum floor area is eight hundred fifty square feet for an ADU with zero to one bedrooms and a thousand square feet for an ADU with two bedrooms. And the maximum floor area for detached JDUs for the permanent ordinance will be twelve hundred square feet. And this is largely based on understanding of what the state requires. The next item pertains to the bedroom counts. Currently, there is a maximum of two bedrooms permitted. And the Planning Commission has specifically requested that we remove any limits on the bedrooms since HCD has indicated, it's, it's HCD's interpretation of the law that cities cannot impose a, a bedroom limit. So this provision has been removed. The city attorneys, it is city attorneys' interpretation of the law that we can impose a bedroom limit. However, it's HCD's interpretation that we, we cannot impose any bedroom limits. The next item pertains to detached JDUs with the new multifamily residence. Currently, detached JDUs are only permitted with an existing multifamily residential development on the property. In the proposed permanent ordinance, we're proposing that the, that ADUs be permitted with an existing or brand-new multifamily residential development. The reason for this is that we've been getting requests by developers who's interested in building, in proposing an ADU in conjunction with a brand-new multifamily residential development. And so I guess this helps to save, you know, time and money for them. And also, you know, staff is able to, I guess, better plan for the overall project since we're able to review the ADU in conjunction with the new multifamily development to just ensure that, you know, that it makes a good development overall and that it meets all the development standards for multifamily residential projects. And the next item is with regards to restrictive covenants. Currently, the restrictive covenants are only required for ADUs and JDUs. And this is where, you know, a deed restriction would be drafted and then recorded with the county, and it contains provisions that basically prohibits a JD, the ADUs or JDUs from being sold as a separate unit and that it limits it from being used for short-term rentals. We're proposing to remove this requirement because for, I guess, is to help streamline the process that we do not have to, basically, it just bypasses having to draft the covenants and get it recorded, et cetera. Since the, these provisions are already in our urgency ordinance, and we are keeping this requirement for JDUs because JDUs does have a owner occupancy restriction. The owners are required to reside on the property. And in addition, the state actually requires that we impose deed restrictions for JDUs. So the next item pertains to driveways. Currently, only, driveways are only permitted if it provides access to a garage. We're proposing that a second driveway also be permitted on corner lots that's developed with ADUs, regardless of whether the second driveway provides access to a garage. And this is just to help provide more opportunities for onsite parking. Since, you know, the state has basically restricted cities from imposing parking requirements for ADUs. Like if you're, you know, within half a mile of a public transit, you have to be exempt from any parking restrictions. And so this is just to help alleviate some of the, you know, parking impacts and spilling it, you know, onto the, the streets. So provides the opportunity for more onsite parking. The next item pertains to raised landings and platforms. This currently is not addressed in the urgency ordinance. We're proposing that there be a provision, basically states that raised landings and platforms shall only lead into an entryway of an ADU and shall not exceed fifty inches in depth and nor more than six inches in excess of the width of the adjoining doorway. This provision is basically to address concerns with ADUs that are proposing, I guess, larger decks or porches where, you know, with, with ADUs being constructed in the backyard and also in being so close to the property line because they're only, you know, basically, they have to only be a four foot step back for the rear inside property lines, that this could cause some concerns for privacy, since if you have a raised landing, you're so close to the neighboring properties that one can easily just look over somebody's backyard. So this is to help just kind of allow for raised landings that are just enough for, for access into the entryway. This next item is with regards to patios and porches. Currently, this is not addressed in the urgency ordinance. The patios and porches are detached or considered detached accessory structures, and it does have to meet the detached accessory structure section of our zoning code. And in that section, it does specify, you know, that detached structures, it basically can't be, the cumulative areas can't be greater than two hundred square feet, but it also has a provision in there that says that you have to have at least a thousand square feet of open space. And so with a single-family home, that provision is not that difficult to meet, but with a ADU in the back and that becomes more challenging. And so this is just a way to provide some flexibility for an ADU to have an attached covered patios and porches. And this is, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer your questions. May I? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Is there any question or concerns from members of City Council before I open for public comments?
Can you clear the PowerPoint? Can I have a question? So, okay, so the maximum, maximum size of ADU, the, the state law that established is twelve hundred square feet, is that right? But then we cut it down to, we cannot legally regulate how many bedroom, how many ADUs are being built, allowed to be built on the, on the property. So we established that one thousand square feet limit for the ADU. Is that correct?
Yes, and I, I would suggest that maybe Deputy City Attorney Scott Porter weigh in on that particular question, why there is a little bit of a difference.
Yes, unmute.
Yeah, unmute.
There we go. So there are two sets of questions. The first question was whether we are allowed to regulate the number of bedrooms. The California Department of Housing and Community Development says we cannot, and I disagree with them. My read is, I've had conversations with their staff and I've asked their interpretation of the law, and I don't think that their interpretation of the law is well-founded. So in my view, we have the choice to regulate based on the number of bedrooms if you want to. That's entirely a policy determination. Obviously, it would come with some risk because HCD disagrees with me, but I think that we are in a very strong position to regulate, to do that if we wish to. As far as the second question that you had, state law unfortunately is not clear about exactly what are the limits. HCD has said that we are allowed to set limits on the size of accessory dwelling units to be as small as eight hundred fifty square feet for zero to one bedrooms and one thousand square feet for two bedrooms and above. However, there is language in the state statute that suggests that actually that is not correct. So if you agree, so there are legal issues with that, and the city would be taking on risk if it decides to keep the eight fifty, one thousand number. The safest course would be to increase the size limitations so that it is the, for attached units, that you would allow an attached unit to be at least fifty percent of the size of the house, the existing primary dwelling, in addition to allowing the eight fifty and the one thousand square feet. As far as detached units, there is language that suggests that actually HCD is wrong and that for detached units, we must allow them to be one thousand two hundred square feet. So in both instances, what is before you is not the safest course. The safer course from a legal perspective would be to increase the maximum sizes.
You know, I, I have really bad connections. If I would cut in and out as a supporter.
Um, I, so, what, what, so I guess I'll try to summarize. So the short version is that the city can reduce its legal risk by increasing the maximum size of units. So for attached units, the safest course would be to increase the maximum size to at least, so in addition to allowing at minimum eight hundred fifty square feet for zero to one bedrooms and one thousand feet for two bedrooms, that you also allow the ADU to be fifty percent of the size of the primary dwelling. So it'd be the larger of those two numbers. So that's one issue. And then the second issue is with respect to detached units, the safer course is to allow them to be at least one thousand two hundred square feet. You can always increase, you, you, you can increase everything as much as you want. There's no prohibition on that. You can always be more lenient for ADUs than the minimums required by state law.
So we, we still reduce from twelve hundred square feet that were established by the state law to the thousand. Is that correct? And that's so basically we reducing the size.
So the Planning Commission had recommended reducing the, the Planning Commission had recommended a reduction in the size? That is why you have the ordinance before you.
If I, the, the, what the Planning Commission recommended was, was essentially to, to reduce the size to what HCD and HCD's handbook says is the minimum size, which is that eight fifty, one thousand number. So it's, it, it didn't necessarily reduce it below what the state says. It, it reduced it to the, to the numbers that are included in HCD's handbook.
May I further clarify that? I think this is, because I was a little confused also, is that they only reduce that for the attached ADU. But the detached ADU is still twelve hundred.
That's correct.
Well, the HCD manual also mentions that that it's for both units, but there is more language with respect to the eight fifty, one thousand. So it's kind of both.
Yeah, or twelve hundred for both, correct?
So is this the same? Is it the same ordinance that the Garden Grove passed a couple of weeks ago? That limit the side ADU to a thousand square feet? It sounds very familiar.
Yes, they, they also held their public hearing for, for ADUs. I think they had their third reading last night.
Yes, I have a question. So what is the maximum square feet proposed by the state for the attached ADU? Is that a thousand or twelve hundred? I'm talking about.
So for attached, HCD says it's eight fifty and a thousand.
About a state?
And then this, and then my interpretation of state law is that you would reduce your risk if in addition to that, you also allow fifty percent of the size. So it'd be the greater of eight fifty, one thousand or fifty percent were attached.
I see. So for the attacks, the state never mentioned about twelve hundred. Am I correct? I see. So the uh for the attacks, the state never mentioned about twelve hundred. Am I correct?
Correct.
But does our city have authority to increase up to twelve hundred for the attacks?
Yes, yes. You you can increase it to any number you want. As long as it's more, you could increase it to fifteen hundred or two thousand or. Any number you want.
Oh, okay.
And let me clarify something here. If you were to increase it to twelve hundred, Scott, would it also be true that we should put the greater of twelve hundred or fifty percent? Of the existing dwelling?
I got it.
In order to be.
Correct, right. For for attached units, you would still need to have the fifty percent for the attached units.
So whichever one's bigger.
And basically, it's easy, a risk management catchall clause. Is that is that correct?
Yes, if you want to reduce your risk, you would increase the sizes. That is correct.
There was a um. Have staff to explain the uh the junior ADU. And which cannot be built inside the garage. Could you uh explain it in a layman terms?
Excuse me, Councilmember Doke. Before we jump into that next topic, can I chime in on the attached uh version since we're speaking about the attached?
Um sure, please.
I think the safest bet legally is to um add the fifty percent. Onto the verbiage there um to keep us, you know, safe legally. But not any bigger than that, because the same time there were uh giving uh, you know, residents. The opportunity to do this, we also have to be mindful of the of the of the neighbors, not. Not every household is going to be building an ADU. So I think we need to just not go any larger than the eight fifty a thousand plus fifty percent. I think that's we're legally safe. And it's also, I don't even want to go any bigger than that, to be mindful of the neighbors. So on the attached, on the attached version. And I think there is no debate on the detached. And then we can move on to the garage. Conversation.
If I may ask you um. Supporter. If we were to uh for the attached ADU, if we were to put it at twelve hundred square feet. Um would we still need to to reduce our risk? Do we still need to add on the fifty percent rule?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other question or concerns before I open for public comments?
I think we were going to discuss the the JADU. Yeah, and putting that into the garage. Alice, do you want to talk about that or?
Uh yeah, that's fine. Um so basically you can create a JDU from um within your your house. Um whereas it's part of your primary residence. Um and. Well, and then you can also create, you know, an ADU from your garage. So basically, you cannot convert your garage and then call it a JADU. You can convert your garage and call it an ADU. And where this might make a difference is that you're only allowed to have one ADU and one JADU on the property. So if you um so if we basically prohibited. The JDUs from being converted from the garage and and somebody has, if they want to convert their garage. Then they would have to convert it to an ADU. What that means is then you would not be able to build another detached JDU. On the property or build another attached JDU since you're only allowed to have one ADU. Um but you could still build another JDU on on the lot. Um so I'm not I'm not sure that completely answers the question, but um.
No, you confuse me. I'm sorry, but okay, the JADU.
Okay, so. Not converts. It's you can you can convert a JADU in a garage. Okay, you can convert. ADU. Does it make any sense? You can convert a garage into an ADU. But you cannot convert a garage into a JADU.
Currently, yes.
Let's go back to basics. A JADU by definition is one is an ADU that is less than five hundred square feet. Correct?
Yes.
So if you're saying that we're not allowing the garage to be converted to a JADU. So where would you propose the JADU to be? Or where would that be from? Build one that is less than five hundred square feet? Whether that be.
So part of it.
Anything that is small and a JADU is anything that's less than five hundred square feet, correct?
There's a there's actually one other requirement. There's there are two other requirements. Number one is, and and this is probably the most important distinction. Is that by law, state law says a JADU must be within the primary residence. So it needs to be within the single family dwelling. That and because of that, then we say, well, it. You can't be in the garage because it needs to be in the primary dwelling. I think. The reason, the idea behind this is that you're kind of there. It's almost like they're part of your family. Because the owner has to live on site. If you have a JADU, the owner has to live on site. So they, I really think it's the idea of. Grandma lives in the JADU with the family. Additionally, a JADU is allowed to share. Restroom facilities with the primary dwelling. There's no requirement that it's grandma. I'm just speculating that that's the reason.
Okay, then all it is is a room addition. That's less than five hundred square feet.
Essentially, yes.
Which is a house.
Right.
And it shares because it, I mean, what you're describing to me is just a room that is attached to the house. It's not detached. It's added to onto the house that's less than five hundred square feet. And you said that a JADU gets to share all the amenities of the kitchen and.
Uh well, it it you can share restroom facilities. You cannot share kitchen facilities.
Okay.
So you can have a an efficiency kitchen.
Okay, so that's really different than um a room addition. It has, it could have its own kitchen. But it needs to be.
And it might even have its own bathroom as well. But but there is the option to share, but it is mandatory that there it ha- it must have a restroom facility. Whether it's shared with the primary dwelling or whether it's its own is a choice.
You know what? I'm not sure this is really. Um I did you clarify this because that sounds really weird. That you would call it a JADU and all it is is just a difference in the size of the ADU. What you said earlier was an attached ADU that is eight hundred fifty or thousand or twelve hundred square feet. So in so a JADU would be an attached ADU that is small, that is less than five hundred square feet. I really think a JADU. Uh all this time I've, what I've read before, I thought the definition of a JADU is one that is converted. From the garage, the garage being converted to a JADU.
So it 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 would be converted from the primary dwelling. So what it would have to mean.
But your definition of the, because you're saying that what you interpreted was that it. Says that it has to be within a family residence and you're interpreting that the garage is not part of the family residence. Because you don't live in the garage and that's why you call a JADU one that is attached to the house, the resident. Not a garage. But are you sure about that? That interpretation?
Well, it uh well, okay, there first of all, that that's a very good question. Uh for there is no case law, so I cannot cite to a court case that answers that question. Uh what I can do is I can tell you that HCD actually disagrees with me. HCD says that there may be instances where we must allow attached garages to be for JADUs. I disagree.
I and I also disagree with you. Because what I've read and when I did my research and read up on that, I thought of JADU. I'm I'm relying on you though, so if you tell me it is what it is.
No, there there is, there is no hard and fast answer. The rule is it has to be within the residence. So you, in my view, you cannot reside in your garage. So it's not part of your residence. You cannot legally live in a garage. So in my view, it's not required. Now, HCD disagrees with me because they want to advocate for this happening. So if you want to allow them in the garage, you certainly have that choice.
But when you call something your residence, it's like when you say, um, this is my residence. Well, it includes your garage. Like I reside here. It doesn't mean I reside in the garage. You know, this is my residence.
Yeah, you you could certainly make that argument. Yeah, absolutely. And and that's one of the issues.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I think I think what Scott's saying here is that you have the freedom to make that determination. You could say that the garage is permissible.
Okay, so the. An attached, single car garage, is that bigger than five square feet? And it can be converted to ADU?
It's four hundred, right?
It's usually it's around a hundred square feet. For a two.
I'm sorry. I said, what was that?
It's typically around four hundred square feet for a two-car garage. If you want to just convert the garage, it's typically around four hundred square feet.
Okay, so you can convert your garage into a ADU.
ADU.
But it's just, it's cannot be called JADU.
Under our.
But you and the city council have, correct. So you have the, that that was one of the changes that the planning commission made. If you want to allow it, you may allow it. If you want to prohibit it, you're also allowed to prohibit it. It's your choice.
Okay, are we uh?
Uh what is this? State say about the garage conversion? As far as eight being allowed, JADU or ADU? What does the state say on that?
So the general consensus is that we must allow garage conversions. And if for ADUs for accessory dwelling units. Uh and that we are not required to allow garage conversions for junior accessory dwelling units.
So so somebody can convert the garage into a ADU. And then then they're limited on adding, and if they want to add a a JADU. They're limited on the size on that, which basically a JADU is just a small room addition.
Right. And additionally, you don't get to increase the size of your house beyond what you would normally be allowed to do. So if if based on your square footage of your house, the largest house you could possibly have was, I'll make up a number, two thousand square feet. You don't get to have two thousand square feet plus a JADU for two thousand five hundred, because remember, it has to be within the primary dwelling. So if you have an existing fifteen hundred square foot house that could be as large as two thousand, sure, you could add five hundred square feet to be two thousand. Because that fits within the size of what is allowed as the primary dwelling.
Okay. There's some some, I'm sure the state's doing a good job confusing everybody.
Absolutely.
All right. Um I don't know what the answer is.
My next question for Alexa, I guess, regarding. I guess, I guess. I'm sorry. By Greg Johnson. My Alexa is answered. Stand right now.
Okay.
Please try a little later. Well, you have to change your name because I don't know how to change her. So um, okay. Our our ADU and junior ADUs in general, are we going to be able to apply those numbers? To the um, what do you call it, number?
Arena.
Arena number? Is that a, is that confirmed?
It is confirmed that they that they will count towards our arena. Now, when we're within our arena, there's there's different. Levels. There's different levels of affordability. So we are assigned different numbers for very low income, low income, moderate income, and then above moderate income. So the 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 rules are are in flux and changing right now because ADUs are relatively new. Um we weren't in this situation eight years ago, the last time we updated our arena. So this time around, there's there's been a lot of conversation. Um as to how these ADUs can be counted within our arena. For sure, they could be counted at the above moderate level. Um the goal, of course, is to count them, you know, at at one of the lower affordability levels. So um actually, Scott was able to share some information that he's received. Um we're also working with with our housing element consultants. So it it looks as though there's going to be some guidelines provided by the state that that are going to give us more information on what we can count. At at those lower income levels. Um it's our goal, and and other cities do this now, is to, you know, essentially. Ask the homeowners on a voluntary service. Um basis to let us know what they plan to charge for the ADUs so we can accumulate some data. Um but other communities are doing this now. And so what what SCAG has put forward and what it looks like HCD will accept. Um is with the collection of this data, there'll be um an average, if you will, based. Uh I don't know if it'll be SCAG region wide, so a a lot of the Southern California counties. There'll be enough data for them to say, okay, overall, fifty percent of ADUs are at the affordable level. Therefore, city, you may count fifty percent of your ADUs at the affordable level. Uh we're we're still learning some of the details of that. Nothing has been completely formalized, but. But yes, we we expect we'll be able to count some of them at those at those lower levels.
So therefore, this is our chance. Of meeting the arena numbers, of being able to count the ADUs and the junior ADUs and. But we just don't know the specifics, whether we get to count all of them or half or fifty percent or whatever. And so the details in like how we're going to go and and execute the plan of asking our residents what they charge for. And stuff like that. That's we won't, we'll leave that part out. I think that shouldn't be hard. But um I think this is our opportunity. If we're talking about ADUs today and we neglect to bring up. The fact that the, you know, it could be counted towards arena numbers, then I think um that, you know, wouldn't be good. So our, I think the outcome of how we vote is going to, we should take into that to consideration. You know, this is going to help arena numbers. Because we are a built up city. There's no way we're going to go and be able to build ninety eight, eight ninety eight hundred units, right? And so I think we were pretty agitated that number, but now here's our opportunity. To be able to to, you know, get our arena numbers to come back.
Yes.
Putting this towards our.
We certainly need all the.
So that that is, that has been confirmed?
It's confirmed they they will count.
I don't know how exactly how they're going to count, whether it be fifty percent or or all of it, but it has been confirmed that it could, it will be counted. Okay, thank you. That helps.
All right. Is there any other question before I open for public comments? I see none. So City Club, open for public comments.
Yes, so I do not have any advance requests for uh public comments for public hearing, but I do have a couple of people raising their hands. So first speaker is Jody Boyd, and again, it's five minutes per speaker. Jody?
Buddy, this is Jody. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this issue. Um obviously, because I feel passionate about the homeless, I'm equally as passionate about. Acquiring and building more housing and apartments. And I think that accessory dwelling units can help not in in that area as well. Um and to count towards our overall. Arena numbers is a good thing. I do support what Kimberly said, though, is we really need clarification. Around what we're going to call a junior accessory. A junior ADU and an ADU. And personally, I don't understand why a garage wouldn't be used as a junior ADU. Um and then go ahead and put an ADU in the backyard or even a combination of two. Um junior ADUs, but I think that a garage, because they are relatively smaller. Would be perfect for a smaller place, you know, rather than build. You know, rather than building onto an existing house. Or even completely converting one's, uh, standalone bedroom inside the house over into a little, you know, granny apartment. So, you know, I think that, I, I understand what Kimberly was on to. We really need to clarify that, and we need to really give ourselves as much flexibility. Also, um, just a little caveat, I'd like to make sure that, um, any homeowners. That request permits to do this, that they are informed upfront and probably, again, along the way, to make sure they understand. That by doing this, their property as a whole, uh, will be reassessed by the county, and their property taxes are likely to go up. Um, you know, so that's another thing to think about, to encourage people to, um, build up truly affordable ADUs. If maybe we could find a way that they would get a little bit of a break on their property taxes. Since they're helping us, you know, fill in the big gaps on low-income housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Terry Rains. Terry?
Good evening. I sent an email to various city staff on March sixth regarding the eight remaining concerns I had after the March third Planning Commission meeting. Along with supporting documentation related to the proposed draft permanent ADU/JAD ordinance. I requested a copy of the, or response to that within ten days in anticipation of tonight's hearing. But none of the six people on that email replied, so tonight I will present those concerns again briefly. Number one, the city cannot charge development impact fees for ADUs less than seven hundred and fifty square feet per Senate Bill thirteen. Shouldn't that be noted in the ordinance where impact fees are mentioned? Number two, I don't believe the city can require a minimum size for an ADU or JADU of two hundred and twenty square feet. Because Health and Safety Code one seven nine five eight point one mandates the allowance of efficiency units with a minimum floor space of just one hundred and fifty square feet for a maximum of two people. Number three, one of the amendments the Planning Commission made to the draft ordinance at their March third meeting. Was to go back to the maximum size limits for ADUs to two, eight hundred and fifty square feet for zero to one bedrooms and one thousand square feet for two-plus bedrooms, as allowed by state law. Not reflected in tonight's amendment is the discussion and direction to leave it in the, or up to fifty percent of the living area of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater wording. So I don't know, it appears the city attorney or someone has removed that wording in tonight's proposed ordinance, which I believe. Alies with the intent of the planning commissioner who made that motion for this particular amendment. Number four, newly constructed ADUs are subject to the Energy Code requirement to provide solar panels if the unit is newly constructed, non-manufactured, detached ADU. Per the California Energy Commission, the panels can be installed on the ADU or on the primary dwelling unit. There is no mention of solar panel, panels in the ordinance. Number five, the city cannot mandate that a qualifying arena ADU fall into the low-income designation. As it is worded in the affordability information portions of the ordinance. An analysis must be done to determine the affordability level of each unit. And which arena allocation designation it would fall into. Most ADUs are developed with the hope of receiving market rent, and most owners do not want to be tethered to a restrictive affordable. Affordability covenant for fifty-five-plus years. However, the city's housing, housing element must include a plan that incentivizes and promotes the creation of ADUs that offer rents to households. With very low, low, and moderate income. Number six, it is not a good idea, in my opinion, to remove the requirement to record restrictive covenants for ADUs. The reason given was to reduce staff time needing, needed to review ADU plans. By not requiring recorded covenants, this could lead to issues when properties with ADUs are sold to new, new owners. The JADU is required to be recorded. Number seven, why doesn't the first whereas of the draft ordinance mention the new ADU laws effective January first, twenty twenty-one? In addition to the ADU laws effective January first, twenty twenty. Number eight, the Planning Commission removed allowing attached garage conversions to JADUs, as you were discussing. I am not sure why they made that decision. The only difference in state law that I could see between garage conversion ADU versus JADU. Is that with a JADU, the parking loss must be replaced according to their handbook. And a JADU can share a bathroom facility with the main living quarters. I do not understand the state's reasoning for requiring the parking be replaced for a garage conversion JAD, but not an ADU. Most garages are small enough to qualify for JADU conversion, so I think we need to allow that. In general, I know many are concerned about the state mandating minimum restrictions for ADUs. Parking, for example, is already a huge issue, and these relaxed restrictions only add to that problem. But the fact is, in Westminster, there are already so many unpermitted ADUs and garage conversions that have already been done without the city's knowledge. When the city allowed for a grace period for homeowners to approach the city about their unpermitted conversions. It is my understanding very few people came forward. The Garden Grove City Council recently tried to tighten restrictions in their ADU ordinance, but there was such strong opposition from residents. Primarily from the Vietnamese-American community, that they voted to walk back some of the tighter restrictions. For example, they were going to change the maximum ADU size to the allowable eight fifty one thousand square foot rule. But based on public input, they went back to a maximum of twelve hundred, even for the attached, for two or more bedroom units. But, get this, they also added, quote, or fifty percent of the floor area of the primary dwelling, whichever is less, not more. Wording to the size limit clauses, so I, I'm not sure about that. Maybe Westminster can, consider adding the same wording, if it's legal, with additional clarification consistent with state law. Bottom line, ADUs are here to stay. The good news is they count toward our arena obligations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mike Trung.
Yeah, that's me. Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, uh, uh, my name be Mike Chu. Uh, more people call me is Mike Wu Dao. Um, my position today is totally opposite than two weeks ago, when I was in City of Gannon Road. Uh, two weeks ago, City of Gannon Road is have the amendment, second meeting amendment, I mean, yes, second amendment about ADU. They want to change some kind, couple thing. Um, they want to de- decrease from four hundred square foot to one thousand. And so I'm not a restriction. I'm the one who, uh, presented a group of, you know, just, I didn't know that, just a few days before the hearing. And I asked my friend, a lot of you show up, you know, I present hundred people show up. My person were, uh, were opposed that amendment, because they want to reduce from twelve hundred to one thousand square foot. What my, but the reason I was, I, I, I again, that was a, the city claimed that's because the ADU caused the, the parking issue. Um, but they have no data, no research, no study whatsoever to prove ADU is the problem. And they also have no data, no scientist to prove, to cut down from twelve hundred square foot to one thousand square foot to help the parking issue. And none of them have the answer for that. So after, you know, today, I don't have a lot of time to talk like last time, because last time I present over a hundred people. So they let me talk unlimited, because it piece of bill, three minutes, so a hundred people, so I have a lot of time to talk. But I believe today, I don't have a lot of time to talk. I cannot repeat the whole thing again. But the final was, they vote five-two to my favor. So that's me in the City of Gannon, give, allow four hundred square foot for the, the detached ADU. Now, today, um, and Wednesday, I have the house, I'm going to have, Wednesday, I just buy the house anyway. So today, um, in portion opposite, I support the new amendment, you know? The amendment is wonderful. It's, I, I suppose about, you know, Westminster is expensive now. Yeah, how, uh, Westminster expensive. That's good news. That's mean, the, the city of Westminster, you know, more we want to move in to live, that's good leadership, you know? First, thank you for leadership of Westminster, doing good job to make the city more expensive. That's good thing, though, not bad thing. So people more will come in. Though more will come in, you need more, you know, housing. The state allow to build ADU because the property, they don't, we don't have enough housing for, you know, low-income or affordable people. Um, I totally agree with Scott Porter, you know, uh, he the good officer, he understand the law very well. He say the states don't, don't allow the city to require the limit number of bathroom. So there are no limit on the maximum either. So if you limit the square foot of the house is a thousand, I can build four bathroom. I can build three bathroom, no problem still, but the instrument is smaller. The, the tenant will suffer. They pay the same amount of money for a smaller room, which is bad idea, very bad idea. So I strongly support the, the this amendment. I strongly support. I also have some recommendation. If you think about parking issue concern, there are a lot of, the, the solution for that. For example, right now, the city limit to one parking per ADU. That's wrong. Why don't you eliminate parking to be real? If you take a look again, the, the only one parking, sometimes in Gannon Road. Let's say I build four hundred square foot, uh, ADU, I can only build one parking. Why don't you allow me three, four parking, right? That's wrong. Also, why don't we allow two-story house? Do they, they can have, they can have parking underneath? Or, or can we review percentage of the, the, the grass or landscaping for the parking lots? Or, uh, we can have too many, uh, solution for that. I can email you my proposal for that. So, um, if any, you guys, maybe it's, you know, that's the first time to hear them about EU, but I would like, you know, some of you, or all of you who don't know about much about EU. Um, studying about Gannon Road, what happened there? What I say there, how proposed it, how this decide, how come up with, and, you know, five-two, you know, that, that big, you know, that's a big window. I mean, that's more will argue what I say, so the, the first hearing, they go four-three, second hearing, they go five-two, uh, five-two, you know, three built, can you imagine? After I my explanation, I wouldn't have time to talk like the all detail what ideas like you see the Gannon Road. But, you know, I know I have family time limiters. I don't have a lot of time to explain. But the bottom line is, I support the amendment. This is a very good idea. That's have a lot of stability. Help for, you know, reduce the housing problem. You know, and make the city of Gannon, you know, more will can come to, uh, the, the city of Westminster, you know, be the for shitty. Um, you know, uh, everyone have, need more detail about what I did say on City of Gannon Road. I'm willing to email you what I did say, what my proposal, and, you know, and how I can vend the minds to, to, you know, go my favorite five-two. So I hope today you understand what I say, or, you know, agree what I say to move on this one. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Thus, this is the last call for any speakers?
All right, so we don't have any, uh, any, uh, other speakers, so I'd like to close, uh, public comment. And now it's a time for mayor council member discuss and have action. So I looked at the proposed permanent ordinance. And I'm kind of really happy that our staff, they, I think they already put down that for the attached ADU. Up to, uh, twelve hundred square feet or fifty percent of the, of living area. Uh, whichever is regular. So I think that's a good thing. And even with the detached ADU, uh, twelve hundred square feet. So I'm happy with that. And for, and for a junior ADU. Uh, and they recommended from, uh, member of council, I would like to hear. But other than that, uh, that is my concerns, and I'm really happy with the staff. Council member Hall, I think you can mute it.
Uh, yes, sir. I wanted to clarify, did you, did you hear that staff said, you said staff said what about attaching to you?
I look at the, uh, I look at the proposed permanent ordinance standard in a staff report. Both like a tax and the tax ADU staff mentioned that, you know, they propose twelve hundred square feet. That is, that's in a staff report. Am I right, Alexa?
That, that is the, what was proposed to the planning commission.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. So, both attack and the task ADU, twelve hundred. Am I right?
That's what was proposed to the planning commission. The planning commission made modifications to the attached ADU. So the ordinance that's, that's on the table essentially has the eight fifty one thousand limits for the-
So if that, so if that would be the case from the planning commission already, already recommend and approve only thousand, I want to, I want to go along with the staff. You know, so we're going to extend the attached ADU up to twelve hundred square feet. And that is recommended by staff.
Right, I, and I'd like that idea. And of course, we're going to add, I would like to, if I may, if I may continue, if you, if you're done, Mayor?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay. So then, we are going to add the fifty percent rule. And, and it is going to be, um. So basically, uh, fifty percent of the, um, main, um, that will be the, the main dwelling, um. Which one, whichever one is greater.
Right, right, correct.
Okay.
And any, 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 and, any other area that you would like to revise or recommend?
I would, I would like to-
Oh, council member mention.
Excuse me, uh, Mayor, thank you, and Councilmember Hall. Like I said before, I think we're with adding the fifty percent to the eight fifty and the one thousand square foot. I think that's pretty significant, and then also keeping, keeping in mind your neighbors, you know? I, I, I think a lot of houses in Westminster are, I think I would average twelve hundred square feet. And for, for me to think that you can add another attached, uh, ADU, twelve hundred square feet right behind it, seems kind of little excessive. In my view, for the neighbors, if you take consideration, you know, your neighbors. A thousand square feet is pretty, it's pretty significant. I mean, we don't know as far as how far, you know, it's only four-foot setback, so you'll be putting. I mean, you're basically going to be looking right into your neighbor's side, side, you know, side window. You know, with that, with that setback, so. I mean, twelve hundred, we already can, it's already a state law for the detached twelve hundred. I mean, I don't know, it's maybe seems a little-
We're not having both. I just want to clarify that it is not both.
Oh, no.
You, whether it be detached or attached, so.
But the conversation is, uh-
You say, I know a lot, a lot of homes in even Garden Grove, Westminster, um, you know. City, they are, um, pretty small. So, um, if you were to say, okay, uh, I think the average I've seen would be like thirteen hundred, uh, square feet to fifteen hundred square feet. Um, and let's just say, uh, use that as an example. Um, so it would be twelve hundred plus, uh, plus fifteen hundred square feet. A lot of our, uh, yards are, are pretty big, and remember. Remember that the law dictates, the state law dictates that the clearance is four feet. You can build all the way up to four feet to the lot line. But if you're going to buy, if you're going to build, uh, let's say, um, the fifteen hundred was my example, plus twelve hundred. Instead of a thousand, then you're talking about a twenty-seven hundred square foot home. Okay, attack, which is like your main dwelling, so you've got the eighteen, fifteen hundred square foot. Main dwelling plus the ADU of twelve hundred, that's twenty-seven hundred. Is that correct? Okay, so to me, twenty-seven hundred square foot home. You know, you know, in this day and age, you see a lot of areas that are newer, such as Anaheim. Or Anaheim Hills, and those nice areas. You see their homes are about twenty-five hundred, three thousand, thirty-five hundred. And after you build a twenty-seven hundred square foot home. Okay, you're not going to go all the way to four feet from the fence or from the lot line, correct, you guys? Alice? So if you, our lot is usually around sixty-five hundred square feet and up. That's what I, that's what I know. Um, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, there's Alice, and I know there's, um.
On average, yes, those are our lot sizes.
There are lots that are go, that go up to ten thousand square feet, correct, if I'm wrong? Okay, so you're building, you're talking about maximum, what I- Okay, so you're building, you're talking about maximum, what I I'm saying. Fifteen hundred square foot is the average, I see a lot of older homes that are like even smaller, but I'm taking the average of what I've seen. And I'm not talking about, in a lot of homes in 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 our city, um, you know, have one car garage. Okay, and hundred, hundred, less than a thousand square foot, okay? So if you take a a thousand square foot home plus twelve hundred, that's only twenty two hundred on a huge lot, come on. So you're telling me you're gonna be reducing that down to a thousand? I don't see the difference in two hundred, so if you're gonna hire someone to add on to your house and build this ADU. You know, you want him to have, you want our residents Westminster who have a nice home. That's, that's why I agree with the mayor.
So what are, what are, what are the majority?
They were to build all the way to the lot line, if I'm saying that all the way four feet clearance is what allowed by the city. Uh by the state, then you're, you're talking about would be like a. Would that be a ten thousand square foot home? Okay, five thousand square foot home, we're not talking about that size, we're only talking about a site, a pretty still a bit. Reasonable, uh more like an average home.
Do we know what most cities doing with the the attached um limit, Scott?
Garden Grove just past twelve hundred.
But they wrote on there.
Um. I I I've seen any diff, I've seen lots of different sizes, I've seen. I would say the most common is eight fifty, one thousand, because that's the amount set by the state, but there there are a handful of. Cities that I've seen that allow greater, you know, of course they do the eight fifty, fifty percent. Um but I've seen it higher as well.
Okay. Alright. So so Scott, now how high are you talking about?
I'm so sorry, could I just finish that one thought, that councilman? Okay, I asked you earlier, Alexa. Um, if I could. Ask you to uh, tell me if I, if I remember correctly, but you mentioned that. A lot of people, they build and attach ADU, okay? Oh my gosh, my Alexa. Okay, so you mentioned to me earlier, because I called you and asked you a question regarding the ADU. And you mentioned that a lot of people build an ADU. And then the attached ADU. And they, at the same time, many build, they they men, many add on to their house. That's what you said. Now, right?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's common.
Yeah, and you see the reason that is common is it's, it becomes really very, very expensive because. They're gonna build an ADU to the max, uh maximum allowed. And then they're saying, hey, you know what, that's not enough, so I'm gonna add on to my house. So that's what I see and that this is the reason why I recommend that, hey, give them the two hundred square feet, a lot of these homes are. It's just not how we would like to live in, in, which is, we're trying to compare our community to other. Uh, you know, newer community, I'm not even talking about the up and coming community, I'm talking about just. You know, communities that built like thirty years ago, they're much bigger in size. So give them the two hundred square feet, so that they don't have to spend the money to add on to their house, which they're allowed. And then they add on the ADU to the max, which is if you, if we were to say eight fifty, a thousand. And then they still have to add on, what's the meaning of that? I don't know, but I, that's, that's my point, is that I would give them.
Yeah, and another area that I would like to thanks our staff for the. JADU, so our staff proposed JADU for maximum of four bedroom. So uh. I agree with that. Yeah, that's a two area in a propose.
I think that's.
Permanent ordinance that I agree with staff, yeah.
I think that was just in general, not necessarily for GADU.
That's an ADU, generally.
That's uh. Uh I mean, we're, we're, we haven't, we didn't have a conversation about. If you want to impose a maximum bedroom, I don't know how council feels about that.
Yes, here's my thing, is that I believe the reason we talked about the increase in the bedrooms are putting a limit on the bedrooms is because. I I believe the last time we spoke about this um subject matter, um the subject of ADU. Um I, if you remember, I don't know if it was this council or it's like maybe the. You know, uh last year with it, it's um not with um councilman um. Call us Monzo here, but I believe it was last year when we talked about. Um how many bedrooms can we build if we don't put a cap on it? Um then we would end up building seventeen bedrooms, twenty bedrooms, do you remember that? Uh and so that was the reason for putting a cap on it, but then I found out that that's not right. Is um that bedrooms need to have windows. And so I know Alice and Steve, you're both on the. Planning uh. Uh planning department, could you clarify, is that correct? You need to have windows. And the size of the bedrooms is a specification of what it could be. The smallest bedroom, what it could be, plus you gotta have windows, you cannot just have a closet and call that a bedroom. So I believe it's not necessary for us to say how many bedrooms or to to specify how many bedrooms. Because that would totally be redundant, I mean, that would just be unnecessary, because it's already um. Specified in a code how to build a bedroom, correct? Steven, how?
That is correct. Yes, that is correct, those, those were specifications established in the the building code.
Yes, and there's no way we're gonna build fifteen bedrooms, twenty bedrooms if we don't put a cap on the bedrooms, correct? You guys, in a space of twelve hundred square feet, you can imagine that, you can, if the requirement is that. Uh what you already know, you gotta have windows. And you gotta have a spec, you know, the dimensions that specified in the code.
Yes, the building division.
That is correct.
Probably require some sort of adequate egress, right, for emergency exits, so yeah, they would require windows, but also, and then the minimum. Square footage required for bedrooms would be seventy square feet.
Yeah, so it was really wrong for us to think that they can build fifteen, twenty bedrooms. So for me, I don't care about putting a cap on the bedroom, and and as a matter of fact. Um that might be consistent with the, what the law requires us is that we don't specify, they don't want us to specify how many bedrooms, correct?
Alright, so with that, we have to remove that uh.
Um, excuse me, excuse me, mayor, sorry to interrupt you. Um, what would, what would a twelve hundred square foot? ADU or 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 a tech, detached or attached? Um, look like as far as, it needs to have. Does it have, it does it have to have a kitchen and a living, living room, family room? Or can it just be a kitchen and just all bedrooms, or what does the code say about that, Steve?
So it's mandatory to have a kitchen, uh it can be an efficiency kitchen, but an ADU must have a a kitchen. It needs to have uh bathroom facilities. And uh a- as Miss Two properly noted, minimum size for. A bedroom is seventy square feet, if it's going to have one person in it, if it's gonna have at least two people, it needs to be at least a hundred and twenty square feet. And also they do need to have emergency egress, so that would be windows and then the 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 way in through the house.
So a twelve hundred square foot. Um box with the kitchen in it and a bathroom. Um so how many bedrooms are typically, would you say, four, five, five bedrooms? Not gonna have fifteen, I know that, but can it have more than four bedrooms?
Yeah, that, I would, my experience and planning staff can correct me if they have seen different things. Essentially, they treat ADUs just like you would design a house, that how big, if you have a twelve hundred square foot home. How many bedrooms would you typically design to to be in that home? Two, three, four, something like that would be pretty standard.
Yeah, no, I mean, i- i- if a person is gonna be using it for comfort and and convenience. Yeah, I don't think a person would do that, put more, you know, put themselves in a discomfort. Um, living situation, but I would just be kind of, it's kind of scary, but I guess anybody can do it anytime. To just, you know, put in multiple rooms and just have a boarding house, with just a kitchen and a bathroom and just a bunch of bedrooms. That's something that would not be a pretty scene, but um. Yeah, I mean, if if we're limited on that. Um, not not imposing a limit, and I think, I think the. Legally, the legal standpoint, we're safer, the safest bet is not to impose a maximum bedroom, correct?
Correct.
Alright, so is uh similar to council, are we that, are we going to, we going to remove this uh part? Uh from the proposed ordinance, am I correct? That.
Yes.
About the, about a number of bedroom, yeah, I'm okay with that.
So, yeah, just.
About the JADU, I'm sorry.
How about a JADU, so how? Yeah, I think that we would apply the same to or any other. Concerns.
For the, as far as the JADU for for garages? Or what are we talking, JD?
I would like arena, I would like to, uh at this time, for us to think about arena number. To, you know, um because we do have a a pretty large number. Um allocated to our city, ninety eight hundred was the arena number. And so I would like the JADU to be, to allow the attached garage to be converted to a JADU. So we could count that towards a re- arena number, more likely you're gonna be able to rent that out for a low price.
Yeah, I'm with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, and then to clarify, um if the attached garage becomes a JADU. We would not be requiring them to replace uh the lost parking spaces, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, there was some mentioning of solar panels, I think that's really a great idea, because these are newer units, we're gonna build ADU. Um whether it be detached, attached, we should have some, we should include um some mentioning of solar panels.
Uh, we can certainly include that, uh it's already required by state law, so to the extent that state law applies, then we can include. But if we want to expressly add that in, we certainly can, for example, in subsection nine of the ordinance, it refers to the building code, minimum size. We could add a statement in there saying, right now it says that they meet, they, well, I read it to you. All new ADUs must comply with Title fifteen of the municipal code and any other applicable provisions of the building standards code, including, and then we could say. Any applicable solar panel requirement.
Right.
And then it would just continue from there.
Right, that's it.
So, alright, any uh, any other question from a member on this council?
So did we cover everything, mayor?
I think we, I might say I covered my part, but I don't know about the other council member.
I believe so, we we covered everything.
Okay. Alright, so with all the. Revised that we just made, that would be my motion.
And I.
Yeah, in the proposed ordinance, thank you.
Scott, uh Scott, do we need to take time to put the appropriate wording in? And come back at the next council meeting with that, or are we able to incorporate that?
We have taken so long to, I know that we've had really tight schedules and. So much on our agenda that um we, it caused a delay on our um ADU ordinance. But we haven't had a permanent AD, ADU ordinance for, gosh, it was supposed to be last year. January first of twenty twenty, we had to adopt our temporary ordinance. So I would say if we could, let's make it tonight. There's not that much revision really.
Scott, you're, you're on mute, yeah.
I apologize, um so we certainly can approve it this evening, uh if you look in the packet, there's the original ordinance. It already spells out, so essentially what I heard was that the city council. Was wanting to revert to the original version of the ordinance that was originally proposed to the planning commission. And um in the packet, we can see that version of that ordinance, so it would be identical to that, with the only, the minor revision that I mentioned relating to the solar panels. So I think we, uh if you want to approve that, um.
Scott, doesn't the fir, doesn't the one that went to planning commission have a bedroom limit? We were eliminating the bedroom.
Does, but then exactly, we would remove the bedroom limit, so there would be no bedroom limit, thank you.
Would you, would you please read back, because I don't wanna make any mistakes and. If we approve it, I don't wanna approve the wrong thing, yeah. So read back to us what it says.
So, um. Uh so I believe it would be as follows, so page seven of the ordinance, uh where it refers to the number of bedrooms, that would just be reserved. So that there would be no limit of bedrooms. Uh and then page eight in subsection ten A, where it refers to um maximum building size. It would say the maximum floor area of an attached ADU with zero to one bedrooms, um well, I guess it. It would just be twelve hundred square feet, so the maximum floor area of an attached ADU would be twelve hundred square feet. Or fifty percent of the living area of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. Uh and then we wouldn't change anything with respect to detached, because that was already at twelve hundred. And then uh we would add the the solar panel language that I referenced previously. And then page thirteen. Um within the JADU section, subsection eight, it would revert um to, it would say within the residence slash attached garage. A JADU shall be entirely within a single family residence. Um and uh or or an attached garage. Uh so it'd be, sorry, entirely within either a single family residence or an attached garage. And then nine would say within attached garages, if a JADU is within an attached garage. The lost parking spaces need not be replaced.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. And we have a motion and second on the floor.
Are we still adding the uh fifty percent rule?
I think so, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, can I just be clear on that one? I know it's in with respect to attached, we weren't clear on the detached, is it included in the detached requirement? Because I heard.
It would not be included, the detached, we would leave it as drafted, so pure, for detached, the rule is simply twelve hundred square feet of floor area.
Correct. Alright. Roll call both please.
Uh, I don't have a motion and a second.
I make a motion and council member Ho, second.
Okay, so that is motion by Mayor Ta, seconded by council member Ho, um and it's going to. Introduce an ordinance for first reading entitled ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster to authorize accessory dwelling units. And junior accessory dwelling units consistent with state law requirements and rela- related park fees, and that's as amended. Um reverting back to the original um ordinance that was presented to the planning commission, and then also um some revisions regarding solar panels. The bedroom limits and fifty percent uh, the fifty percent rule, um is that correct?
Yeah, as stated by uh Scott Porter.
Yes, yes, um and that's to be read by title only in way further reading.
And if I may. We need to say that JADU, the definition of it, um in terms of square foot, um that would be anything less than five hundred square feet. Because it.
That's.
It's not just garage conversion, it's also um a adding it to or. Or adding it to the family residence, as you mentioned, so it could be up to what? JADU is what, five hundred square feet and below?
Correct.
Do we need to mention that, or does, we don't need to?
No. It's already included. It's already included in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so roll call vote. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
And uh, Councilmember Nguyen has abstained. And then Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Hey, that motion carries four zero one with Vice Mayor Nguyen abstaining.
Thank you. Next item, uh, regular business, five point one, a wow of track for White Street Improvement Project from Hazard Street to South City Limit. Project number P twenty five zero A and request for budget adjustment for Garden Grove portion. Councilmember, do you need a staff report? Councilmember?
No, I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion made by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Mayor Ta. And this is to approvage budget adjustment in the amount of one million five hundred thousand eight hundred ninety seven dollars to cover the City of Garden Grove's portion per Cooperative Agreement twenty twenty one dash eleven. Increase the revenue account in street improvement grant funds reimburse other for fiscal year twenty twenty one by one million five hundred thousand eight hundred ninety seven dollars. Approve the award of contract to the lowest and responsive bidder in the amount of two million six hundred ninety six thousand two hundred ninety dollars and twenty five cents to All American Asphalt and that all other bids be rejected. Authorize a contingency in the amount of two hundred sixty four thousand seven hundred forty two dollars for potential change orders and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. So roll call vote. Um, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next item, five point two, trap twenty twenty one, twenty two, annual action plan and C D B G funding request.
Councilmember? Would you like to have a staff report or you uh comfortable with the staff report that you already read?
Well, uh, this one just recommend uh to accept the draft uh for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two to initiate the thirty day public review period, right?
Correct.
Okay. Then uh, I move to approve.
My second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Vice Mayor Nguyen. And then I heard Mayor Ta.
Councilmember Manzo, right? Second, okay.
Perfect. And that is to accept the draft fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two, annual action plan in order to initiate the thirty day review, thirty day public review period of the documents in compliance with the consolidated plan procedures of twenty four CFR part ninety one. A roll call vote. Um, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Your motion carries five to zero.
Item six point one, proposed amendment to Westminster Municipal Code Title twelve, streets, sidewalk and public places, chapter four, section one thirty.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so that was uh from Councilmember, motion made by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Mayor Ta. And
Correct.
Okay, that is to introduce an ordinance for first reading entitled An Ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, amending Title twelve, Streets Sidewalks and Public Places, Chapter twelve, Section one thirty, Property Owner Planting and Infrastructure Improvements in the Parkwayes of the Westminster Municipal Code, read by title only in way further reading. Roll call vote, Councilmember Doe? Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Your motion carries five to zero.
All right, uh, next item, five point three. Civic Center Development Project Update. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Staff does have a presentation by PowerPoint, so I'm going to share my screen. Tonight, we are returning to you with an update on the Civic Center project in accordance with the Third Amendment of the Exclusive Negotiating Agreement. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide information on the project and obtain direction from the council. Staff's presentation tonight focuses on the key decision points that are discussed in the staff report, including the project costs, revenues, parking, open space, operations and entitlements. Additional information has been provided in the staff report, but this presentation really focuses on those key decision points where we're looking for direction. Very briefly, I just wanted to show the um, the two planned sites that have been proposed, just so we have a frame of reference as we walk through this. I'm not going to get into the detail of these sites. In the, in the gold there, you can see the private project, the townhomes. And then in the teal, we see the public project, if you will. So this is site plan A. And in this site plan, a new city hall is proposed at the northern end of the site, about twenty two thousand square feet, and it would include both city hall as well as council chambers. The sunken garden down to the south is shown relocated from its existing position. And then to the west of the um, this site, we see kind of modified parking as well as some additional open space. And this is site plan B, very similar, the the gold part still remains um, the residential. And in this particular site plan, the city hall has been moved to the southern end of the site. And in fact, ten thousand square feet is shown as a part of the existing police building with an addition of fifteen thousand square feet, so an annex to the P D that would accommodate um city hall as well as council chambers. Second Gardens remains relocated. You see a larger open space in this site plan and then additional modified parking there at the north along along Westminster. The first point of discussion is a critical issue. It's the financial feasibility of the project, primarily the new city hall and council chambers in whatever form they take. Costs are a function of construction type, of quality, and the material is used and the design. With regards to size, staff has been working with a consultant on a space needs analysis and has determined that to accommodate city hall uses, we need approximately nineteen thousand three hundred square feet. This excludes council chambers. The proposed sizes of twenty two thousand five hundred square feet or twenty five thousand square feet could probably be adequate um to accommodate those uses, depending on the design of the buildings. Council direction is needed um on the location of the building in A versus B, the north versus the south end of the site, as well as the type and quality of the construction. And then after those decisions, further discussion will need to take place on the size, the design. And all of these items really influence the cost. So more information on the project is going to be needed as we go along to better understand these finances. At this time, the ongoing costs and revenues to the city that are associated with the project have um not been provided to staff. Going forward, it will be important to understand these things, what what revenues would be incurred on an annual basis as well as what the cost would be. The developers' two financial summaries present five project revenue sources and a sixth has been inquired about by the developer. For the sale of the city land, staff has obtained an appraisal on the property and that remains confidential at this time. With regards to the parking, there are a couple of issues at hand. The developer's financial summary proposes that the city would sell two hundred and fifty spaces to Coastline Community College. So far, the college district has not indicated they have that much money available. So one question is whether or not the five million dollars is an available revenue source for this project. The second question is whether council wants, that we would ask council to provide direction on, is whether or not they want to sell a portion of this asset in order to help finance this project. The financial summaries also show the use of a community, community facilities district to fund a portion of the project. Last week, the developer provided more information about utilizing a state program called Skip to Sell Bonds. And additional information would be needed on either of these to move forward. However, they um, while they approach issuing bonds differently, the end result still is the same, that the new homeowners from the new homes that are developed on the site would bear additional tax burden that they pay on an annual basis and in order to pay off those bonds that are going to finance this project. Finally, there's the use of the residual police facility bonds. Oh, I'm sorry. Use, it's late. Use of parks and parks and um recreation fees. So whenever a new housing project is developed, we do charge park fees. The purpose of charging those park fees is to fund the acquisition or the improvement of parks to serve the additional residents. So direction is um that we're looking for from council is to understand whether or not you are comfortable with having those fees go towards this project as opposed to um looking for different improvements or or acquiring new parkland. And park fees are um, they are a very good revenue source for um acquiring parkland. We are in a deficit of parkland here at the city. Our Parks Master Plan that we adopted last year does show us at a, at a pretty low ratio from where we want to be. Our current ratio of parkland per thousand residents is uh one point one. Um, oh my goodness. Sorry, we um, one point one acres per thousand residents. Our goal in the Parks Master Plan is to get to one point four acres per thousand residents. Grants and naming rights is also indicated to be a funding source. This one is um, has a lot of unknowns around it. Grants are competitive. Um, there are grants for parkland, that is true, and we do actually look for them regularly. We work with a grant consulting firm that's very good about tracking things down that we would qualify for. Um, but we, we don't bring them in regularly, again, because they are competitive and there are a lot of restrictions on how those funds are spent. Naming rights, uh, again, this is still something we just don't know a whole lot about with regards to this project and how much revenue it it could produce. And then finally, the use of residual police facility bonds. So um, in two thousand nine, we issued bonds, the redevelopment agency issued bonds for the construction of the police facility. Some money was left over from that project. It had to filter through all of the, the dissolution um of the redevelopment agency that happened. But ultimately, uh, the remaining funds were granted to the city for use. However, there are restrictions on those use, uses that still exist under the bond covenants. And that means that those fund monies can only be spent on the police facility. So while we would certainly need bond counsel to take a look at it, it does seem reasonable to believe that if site plan B were chosen, where the police building is incorporated into the new city hall development, that those funds might be available for use for the project. As proposed, this is a city only project. Um, it's really only looking at city land for the most part. So the county is not participating. And the R F P that was issued in twenty seventeen, what was envisioned was to bring in some of the county lots into a, a larger um master vision, if you will. So the R F P and the E N A's all include parcels to the south of the site, of the two county surface parking lots as well as the library site. It is a county library, but it is on city land. So we'd be looking for direction from the council to understand whether the current proposal is adequate as is, or if you'd be looking to incorporate those county parcels as well. With regards to the parking, this is a certainly a multi-layered topic. The um, a parking analysis has been undertaken. Uh, it kicked off on March fifteenth. A park, we expected to take six to eight weeks to have some results that we can share with you. So roughly mid-May, that should be available. Secondly, we have um, the uh, the purpose of the parking study is to analyze the users that are in the civic center. So that includes, of course, city hall, P D, community services, also Coastline Community College, the community rooms and the community service building. Uh, we do often rent those spaces out to the public. Freedom Park doesn't have its own parking lot. Uh, the Rose Center and the banquet facility also utilize the structure. And as you know, uh, both of those facilities can seat hundreds. And then there's also paying courthouse customers that use our parking structure. The surface lots are are commonly used by the jurors, but we do have district attorneys and county staff and then just visitors that that utilize our parking structure. So we will know more when we get the parking analysis, but it could certainly be true that if we were to sell two hundred and fifty spaces to the community college, we would no longer be able to accommodate all of the other users. So we would be looking for direction from city council as to whether or not they felt it was appropriate to eliminate some of the users and then who those users would be. I touched on this just a little bit earlier. So the proposed project does impact our current open space. Um, both Plan A and Plan B make modifications to the open space at this time. Some areas are removed, some are added, others are redesigned in order to accommodate the built environment um for both the private homes and and the public buildings that are proposed. But again, the residential project in this case also adds people. So we're looking at at that standard from the Master Parks Plan and whether or not the um, the park that's proposed adequately addresses both the replacement or the relocation of some of the open space as well as the addition of residents to the site. And just kind of on a technical note, um, the uh, the site plans both show the relocation of the sunken gardens to the south of where they exist. So so just south. And then there has, there have also been a couple of renderings presented that provided modifications south of the relocated sunken gardens, so running south of that all the way down to thirteenth. That um currently, there's those, there's two walkways that run north and south. Uh, there's been a proposal to eliminate those walkways and um green it up a little bit, kind of have a meandering path. Certainly, the the design is at um, the council's discretion to discuss. However, I do want to note that we only own half of that property. The parcel line runs right down the middle. So we would certainly need the the county to agree um that they would like those modifications or enter into some kind of contract with us to be able to use, use their land, particularly for the sunken gardens. The project will impact um existing activities that take place in the civic center as we know it today. And this includes the senior center and some recreational operations. It also includes large events, outdoor classes, and how the buildings are accessed and used. It will also in particular um kind of determine how the, how the senior center will be utilized going forward. So again, we will know a little bit more about um, about the senior center and the parking situation with with the outcomes of the parking study. But there will be consideration to be made as to whether or not the, the existing building, um, which isn't necessarily always operating at capacity in in non-COVID times, as to whether or not the city council wants those services to grow, whether you want the civic center to, the senior center to accommodate more seniors for events and so forth, and and whether or not those seniors would be accommodated within the parking that's proposed. The final item tonight uh that I'll be discussing is the entitlements. The current zoning that we have at at the site is for public use. It doesn't allow for residential uses, so the project cannot be permitted without modifying the zoning. There are a couple approaches to do this. The first would be to utilize a specific plan where you have a standalone document that creates a specific set of regulations that would apply to a specifically set geographic area. This is how Bolso Row was entitled and it's um, it's what we're doing at the mall right now, too. The general plan identifies a specific plan as the desirable way to address development in the civic center mixed use area. Alternatively, um, staff and attorneys have taken a look at a different option, which would be to create a new mixed use zoning designation. So a new zone that could be created and then implemented at the civic center that could accommodate a variety of development types. In summary, there are a number of points we are seeking direction on at this time in order to be able to best move this project forward at the council's discretion. We need to know um if you'd like the project you've been presented with, if you prefer Plan A over Plan B. Um, certainly, there's a lot of discussion to be had about the types of construction and and what the city council would prefer, what you want the city hall to look and feel like, whether or not you're comfortable with the revenue sources that have been provided for, to to finance the project, including sale of some of our um, our parking lot assets. Uh, the C F D, which would levy a tax on the new homeowners, park fees, which could be used in in different ways. And whether or not some of the changes that would result from the project are And whether or not some of the changes that would result from the project are acceptable, changes to the open space, changes to parking and, and changes to operations as they exist right now. So at this point, we don't have further slides. Our developer, Mr. Sheldon, is here with us. So it's up to the city council whether or not you would like to have discussion now, ask me questions or staff questions. We do have quite a, a team here to answer questions, including Jim Raby, who is our economic consultant, as well as our project manager, Barry Curtis. We have several attorneys here, including Assistant Attorney Russ Hildebrand. Or we can, the, the mayor, you can invite the developer to speak and present at this time, too, and we can have a conversation after that.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Any rest or any concerns or? Any other presentation?
Mayor, I, I would like would like to suggest to have Sheldon do the presentation. If there's, if he's available there.
All right, please.
I'll bring him over.
Mr. Sheldon.
Hi Steve, you with us?
There we go. Maybe you record to get the screen larger. Well, there we go. Hey. Good evening.
Good evening, yeah.
You, you'd like me, I was waiting for a more instruction. I will start, I'll pull up the presentation right now. And I will see if I do this correctly. There we go. Yeah. Great. Thank you. The, so let me start with the first first, then we'll get warmed up and we'll get going here. I'll get warmed up. I might have dozed off for a second in the ADU. During the ADU conversation, but it was, it certainly was a good one. So I really, really appreciate that we're having this conversation and focus on, on the civic center that we've got city staff and the project manager. The consultants all working with, with development to refine and enhance the project. It's been quite a long time that I've been wanting to get more involvement. And we have that and I'm very thankful for that. And I think it's great that we have all these questions. That means we're making progress. We're, there's, there's going to be more questions, I'm sure, to analyze and to answer. And I'm sure we'll react to the council with more things that we haven't even thought of yet. But, but that will come up. And that's what happens with, that's what happens in land development. Things that you thought were important don't become, all, in, in the end, aren't important things that you didn't think of, those become important. In the presentation, there's, there's been numerous issues that have been presented by the staff. And I think just to be as concise as possible, I'll focus on what I felt were some of the main ones. And of course, I'll be able to answer any questions for, from the, the council and the staff also of, of things that I made out of interest or to, or to clarify. So this is the kind of an overview of the, the, the kind of the change. We've had quite a few changes since we started. And I think one of the things that changed was that the city had asked us a few, back in, after 2019, to reduce the amount of land area that we were going to be utilizing. We'd hope to use more land area. So we, of course, responded, we reduced the land area from seven or eight acres down to about 4.25 acres. Staff had suggested that we look at changing the, the product from a small lot, single-family product to townhome so we could increase the density part and sensitivity toward the arena issue. That's been quite a discussion among, among the city of Westminster and other cities. So we increased the density to townhomes. And then we looked, it was looked at again and staff suggested, why don't we make the, add some live work? And we thought that was another great suggestion. So we have wrapped the live-work townhomes around the part of the homes that will face out towards the, the open space. And then another suggestion was to include this single-story portion of the police station in the project. We've done that as well. And I think that, that can work out really well. So I just want to kind of go over some of the big picture changes that have occurred. And then go kind of back to our original proposal when we started, we first started on this journey, you know, our thought was this is a benefit to the city without a burden in that the, the potential revenue sources that would pay for the new building would not come from the general fund. That was kind of on the cusp of the stealth tax matter being, being approved years ago. And the residents were concerned that there's, that their funds would be used for this building. And we assured that, you know, it would be from the land sale, the parking structure, the community facilities district and other sources. So when we gave our presentation, we specifically included these items as sources of, 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 of funding or potential sources of funding, rather. You know, and we then went into 2018 and 19 and focused on two main sources, which was the land sale and coastline paying it, paying. And the land sale was based on, again, they mentioned over seven to eight acres of land and coastline was at $25,000 per parking space, which some view as the mark, as the fair market value of parking spaces, parking spaces, and it can fluctuate depending upon where they're at and what the space is, what's the cost of the land underneath, all those sort of things. But with, with the, the changes to the, the reduction in land, the amount of revenue went down. And then also it was suggested that we reduced the 7.5 to 5 million. The, that, that might be a better number. And so with all that said, we had less revenue. And so we had to go back and look and say, we need to fill this gap. We identified the communities of Facilities District. And it's, it's common for new development, new homes to, to kind of buy in. And we, we'll, I'll go into that more, the impact fees, because these are fees that are going to be generated from the project and but for the project, we won't, the city wouldn't have the impact fees. We do think that there are grants and naming rights available. We've seen in other, other jurisdictions that have done that. We have that and we'd like to work more with that with the project manager. So we, so we had to, we had to get creative. And we felt that we did to find, to find the revenue from the gap that was created from the reduction of revenue. Just on the touch of the parking city, I think it was said that we have, you know, signed the contract with the $40,000 consultant. We paid the retainer and the study by LSA is underway and it will be hopefully concluded in early May. As the coastline, you know, I've learned more and more. It seems to me the city has been very generous. And the city nurtured coastline in a sense since its inception through providing parking at a very low cost of coastline. And that helped them, I'm sure, with their, with their budget, with their operations. As we all know, the coastline was constructed with no parking, which is something I've never heard of for a college to do. But that's what happened before our time. So today, coastline is, has the ability and should now contribute its fair share contribution for parking. The amount that is being put there is $20,000 per space. And that's again, very reasonable in the market cost for a parking structure. We have, in, in light of some of the recent conversations, we have identified alternatives to coastlines funding potentially. And where they are, their funds, you know, if they're not available, you know, we're, we're going to get creative again. And we may be, we think we can find other avenues to fill that gap.
Can I interrupt you right here?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but I just see something conflicting and I just need to ask really quick. Um, here it says 20,000 per space. Within a couple of slides back, I see 25,000. And then it's equals 7.5. So there's something conflicting there.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. So the initial amount was, was 25,000 per space, which is $7.5 million. The current is 20,000 per space for $5 million. And I should have included the $5 million in that third bullet fund. I apologize for not doing that. That would have probably clarified that better. So it's 25,000 got the 7.5 million. And the 20,000 is at the, it brings in 5 million at 250 spaces. Another concept is the city can do a fair market appraisal on the value of those spaces, just like they've done on the land to determine the value. I hope that addresses your question.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now I'll move on to the next item is the Community Facilities District. And as I stated earlier, that was something contemplated as a potential funding source in our, in our original proposal. And I want to emphasize that with a CFD, the city, in this particular CFD that was, that Alexa had mentioned with the SKIP program, which is part of a statewide joint-powered authority. It's a kind of a conglomerate of local cities and school districts and, and in smaller counties that if they want to issue public financing for these CFDs, they don't have to go out and do their own, hire their own bond counsel, their own other financing consultants. They can join this, this kind of collaborative. And that collaborative goes out to the market every six months and issues the funds. So there's a way to get some economies of scale. But with that, the city council itself will not be levying or imposing the special assessment. You will not be putting the tax on this property. It will be done by the landowner slash the developer. Our legal counsel has advised us that CFD funds can be used for a part or whole of the city, of, of the city hall. That is John Ramirez from Rakan and Tucker. Home buyers, when they go into a community, one of the things that they really desire is living communities that are near the police and that are near a library, a, a community center, parks have walkability. And so we think with this area being very desirable, the amount of additional money a CFD will cost will be something that they would certainly be willing to pay. And the amount is also fully disclosed to the home buyer upon entering escrow and at the close of escrow. It's all part of the signing of all the disclosures. It's definitely disclosed. It's a, an issue that you don't want to not disclose. The, the additional cost for the CFD is relatively de minimis when computed within the overall home payment. So here is a spreadsheet I'm to have. The spreadsheet showing the project and it would be compared to, this is our project here in Westminster, compared to one that was recently built by Brook, by Brookville Homes called Lantana Beach, which was about three miles north on Beach Boulevard, I believe, at Orangewood. And it, so I, we just took the same dollar amount for the mortgage. And that, so that remained the same. We took the base taxes, which actually Westminster is a little lower on your base tax rate. We took the homeowner's insurance being the same. We added in the CFD amount per month. And then we added in the HOA. And the HOA at the other community we project is going to be higher. They had, theirs is gated. They felt they needed to add, it's right off Beach Boulevard, it's right on Beach Boulevard. They felt they needed to add a pool and other things. And so their HOA, their HOA is 250 to 300. And the HOA here would be, you know, 150, 175. So when the home buyer goes to calculate and compare, their, their net difference is only $56. And that's really how a home buyer is going to, when they're weighing, you know, which place to go to, you know, this, 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 this community might have better schools, but that community has lower taxes, this community, you know, I can get on the freeway quicker. There's a lot of things that go into a home buyer's mind when they're, you know, visualizing if that's where they want to live and what are all those components. So we think that the net effect won't be that great. And if, if it was a hundred dollars, it still would be something that in our strong opinion, that home buyers would be willing to pay to move into a great area and to move into Westminster. The amount of, the, the, the quantity of open space and the quality of open space is very important here. And I, I think that the quality and quantity can be co-equals. They're both important. Important how much you have and the quality of what you have. And I think when we can, we'll show with our plan that the, this plan will create a greater desirability and attraction of the civic center. It creates a net increase in usable parkland within the civic, civic, civic area. And of course, we wanted to say again, we're good. The Sunken Garden is being relocated with adjacency to the council chamber, which, with the, which I think will add some unique programming opportunities for the Community Services Department to really have more programs and events for the public with this new, with this new design. Here's the picture right here of the, on, on your left is the area between Westminster Boulevard and the council chamber. It's a nice, when you're coming kind of from the researches building up toward the council, past the council chamber or to the council chamber. And that's the open space there. And then the, on the right is, is, in that area will that's on the left will be developed and not that way. On the right is the park area that we propose along All-American Way. So I'm just saying we're, they're, they're not, they're not being built exactly the same place, but that would be the quality of the, you know, additional open space that would be available after the project all along All-American Way. Pretty much where the City Hall parking lot is at right now. And then this is just a little, again, this is up to the city, but a concept in this passive park area, you could create a sitting area for reading a book, for meditation. We, we look at more as a kind of a quiet, private area and, and, but this is ultimately going to be up to the Community Service Department and to the city and to the residents, what type of programming that, that you want there. On the increased community program, because that really is one of the other, you know, one of the one or two, three main, main reasons to do this is to improve the city hall building and, and have a purpose-built one that meets the needs and is safe and is new and modern. And then secondly, or equally to, to have services and programs for the residents. And we think this whole new campus provides a new paradigm for the, for the city events at the civic center. I've mentioned the Sunken Garden and no more extension cords. There's going to, of course, be a an Edison power source there for all the power that, that needs to be used there for the events. And the, the large usable park space area that, that was referenced earlier between the police department and the parking structure on one side and the courthouse on the other side can be called the, the new quad. It can be called the mall. And that mall name is not South Coast Plaza. It is after like the mall in Washington DC. So here's kind of a picture and I'll go back to that slide. Right now, on the, on the slide on your left is the current, you know, current condition of that area where there is like a 10-foot walkway on the outer side of the, of that area. And then on the inside, those two wide concrete paths, those are 20 to 25 feet wide. And so there's, there's a lot of room to walk back and forth. And so we would suggest leaving the outer 10 feet paths and we have to take out the concrete and really it's up to the city what you want put there. The type of landscaping would be just determined ultimately by the city and the residents. We just need to put something there so you can see what a suggestion is. But I mean, this can be viewed with the parking structure and the parking. This is a new city mall area for a lot of programming, a lot of programming opportunities. So going back here, this, this provides opportunity for a lot of large events on the evenings and the weekends on the mall area. You have very close parking with the parking structure. That's a really great thing. There's lots of, I think we talked about, there's been talk about the Spring Festival and all those sort of things. And I think it's just it's a new paradigm of how, how the city and the community services will program this. And it presents lots of opportunities. I mentioned earlier, the Sunken Garden and the council chamber. It's our vision to have, you know, of course, the council chamber on the ground floor and to have these sliding doors that will kind of open up 20 feet wide, 25 feet wide that will go out to the, 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 the mall and the park area out in front and then the Sunken Garden where that council chamber is going to be a non-fixed seating. So the seats won't, aren't permanent. There, there's chairs that can be replaced, that can be stored. And then you have a open multipurpose room that is then a place to have events. And in the summer, the doors are open. You're out, you're out in the Sunken Garden, you go back and forth. It really, it's like having a, you know, your, your home and your family room opens up to a really big backyard. And I think that's, that's something that will, that will come to be really loved and appreciated and utilized quite a bit. And again, you know, we're proposing these things that, things have been done for decades a certain way and it done, done well. But you know, change takes time. And I'll just say that we all have to get accustomed to it. Sometimes for me, when my wife wants me to do something and wants to have the, you know, get involved, I resist it. I don't. I don't like it, I hate it. And then I do it and I'm so happy she made me do it. And so we just have to sort of, you know, embrace these because I think they will be better for for the city. And it'll create a greater greater desirability and attraction for residents that will activate the civic center. So activating and providing this new, whether it's the quiet passive park where there's more active area that that has larger, that's the real benefits to bring the residents down to down to the civic center. I've shown you, shown you this page here. So this is just some, you know, pictures of activating the community gatherings. You can see, you know, the Tai Chi, you can see the the with all the umbrellas on the bottom and just there's so many movies, the movies can be changed to this part of the city where the screen is up against the parking structure or or section of the of police department. So there's just a lot of creative ways to to have all this large grass area to have to have city programming. And I'm spending a lot of time on this because I think it's what's important and the benefits for the city residents. Here's another kind of retail pop up debaters that when you have these events, you can have, you know, a small business person can have a a little pop up place to sell bagels in the morning for those that are coming on a Saturday morning or or for the court users. Or you can have different, you know, there's a lot of pop up retail that's going on right now for for different foods and services that they even have pop up books there. So that would just more and more ideas who work with with the city. I'm going to touch, I think, on the park grants. We do think that there are park grants available. I was involved with a land that we had developed in another another municipality. And it's a two acre parcel that was dedicated to the city as a part of our development. And the city received a grant to have more of a passive park and using the water tolerant indigenous landscaping that they got special grants from for that use. And that's how they were able able to get funds. So we would ask that the council, you know, give direction that we, the developer works with the project manager and staff that we can sneak these out and have a process to apply. I think I think your consultant, the head of Steve Semillion, who I believe owns the company that you folk that the city uses. And I know him from college, so we'd love to work work with this company. On the naming rights, you know, the postal line has definitely shown that that's a prime example that local government entities can garner the the naming rights. And I think this proposed mall is another great potential for having a philanthropic, you know, minded business person or resident, you know, to put their name on a big popular mall area in the city. There's also the, there's the different rooms that are within the council chamber. There's the other parks. I I believe that there's opportunities. We have, we we got this idea from another city that did it and they did it really well and did did raise, you know, seven figures plus of funds. And and if it is popular and it is something desirous, you know, any funds that are received that are over and above what's needed for the instruction, those can go to the general fund. So those, you know, I think that certainly can be a part of the agreement. But we'd asked again to have have some focus on that. And we would need, we would need the council's help on that. That's just not something we can do, but that's something where we need the council to help, maybe help come and close the deal. So on the cost, just to what we've, you know, just to reiterate, we it's been this past 10 months has been really good. There's been a lot of consultants hired and a lot of money spent. And we've been hard at work and I guess that's evident in what we've and what our budget has been so far. And I think this is just a this financial commitment demonstrates our confidence in the project and that we'll be able to, you know, be able to find all the tranches of money that we need to find that we have found rather than that we believe are there. And as we go forward, we'll have to continue, you know, financing all the things until we are at a point that we are about to commence construction. So there are some additional work, work things that the work that needs to be done that's underway. The the building script, the programming, we're looking for some identification of similar constructive buildings for fight tours by the council and staff. We need to look at the drywall that is that has been brought up adjacent to the community center. And of course, completing the parking analysis, among other things. And just touch on the I won't spend too much, too much time on this, but this is this is again, more for the the public that is watching. Again, our the taxes are not increased. The money comes from sources that are not part of the general fund. And I think we've touched on, you know, why the city hall needs to be rebuilt based upon the sprinklers and the seismic condition. And and that's the information that I've received that the seismic condition could be upgraded. And part of the problem is that if you do the sprinklers, it triggers a lot of other laws and rules that you have to do just a a ton more. It makes it very cost prohibitive. And then we've I've touched on the open space and the second garden. So I think, again, our checklist, you know, we think we've stayed true to no general fund tax dollars. A progress built city hall, we activating the civic center with a large park mall area. And of course, ample parking for city users. I just prior relevant council actions. At our August and our November council meetings, the city council did extend some timeframes for the staff and Sheldon development with studies and documents. Our request would be that the completed parking analysis and the financial feasibility is that items be continued to the May twenty sixth, two thousand twenty one city council hearing. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I want to thanks Mr. Sheldon for his presentation. I think that's a really, really impressive presentation. We appreciate that. So do we have any any questions or concerns from a member of the city council? I do have the question for our new consultant. I know that right now we have a new project manager, Mr. Curtis. So I'd like to ask him that. Are you working well with Mr. Sheldon?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. I have been working on this project for a little less than a month now and have had no issues working with Mr. Sheldon to date.
All right. It's really good to hear. That's mean that Mr. Sheldon is easy to work with, am I right?
Like I said, I I've been working with him for a little less than a month and I haven't had any issues. I can't can't speak for before that or other folks working with him, but I have not had any issues working with him whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions or concerns from council member?
Question for staff.
Please.
Would that be Alexa?
Well, we'll pick the best person to answer it once we know what the question is.
Okay, so here today says subject matter civic center development project update. So are you giving us an update of what do you need from us today? Are we at a crossroads and are we to make any decisions today? Could that before we go on?
I think the answer to that is is some decision making, if if not tonight, in the near future is is going to be pretty important for for us to continue. You know, especially when we're talking about the big issues of of costs. For example, you know, kind of coming back to the idea of where is this building? What does that building look like? What is it made of? You know, we can't, we can't really fully flush out costs until we have direction on items like that.
Yeah, I I don't see, you know, any mentioning of the cost in terms of a cost of financial feasibility and studies and all that. I think you said that's coming. But anyway, I'll let everybody go first and I'll go last.
Any other council member have any question either for Sheldon or for staff, please?
I just want to make a point for for council and I guess generally for council. I was just looking at our our staff report. Our key policy decisions to consider, the number one and the most important is the financial feasibility of this project. Not only the project, but considering the overall project projected fiscal status our city in the future years. I think that's the one that we need to focus on right now. As you know, our picture, financial picture is has a big giant question mark on it right now. With the measure SS sunset quickly approaching. I think that's that really changes and puts a a really focus on on what that says for us coming up here shortly, quickly. Where does that put us? I mean, we all can guess that, you know, we've had conversations, I don't, council member, oh, it's brought this up before as far as what that would, the impacts that that would bring to our city. I think we really need to have an understanding about what that is. I hear layoffs, if there is layoffs, what would they be? If there is cuts in services, what would those, what would those reduction in services be? I think we really need to have an understanding of what all that, what all that says for us and for this project. So maybe I think that's something we really need to focus on right now. The other thing that we need to focus on is our businesses surviving. As you know, the commercial moratorium for evictions was has ended. And the commercials are going to have, commercial businesses are going to have to start paying back. Not just their current rent, but their back rent. And we don't know the future of those businesses surviving. I know there's one of my go to restaurants, it's on Westminster Boulevard, just boarded up their windows and locked up their doors. And I don't know if that's the last one. I hope so, but there's no way for us to know. There's no way, no way for us to know if the voters are going, if the ballot measure SS gets put on there, if it would be voter approved, if the voters were to approve that measure again. What would that do to us? We just don't know. I think right now we just have a this property is at a big giant leap of uncertainty for this financially. Do we really want to take that giant leap of uncertainty in our financial future? I think it's a question that we need to ask ourselves. It just really concern about us, our financial future. And is this a time for us to to be taking this this kind of big major leap of uncertainty? It's one of the things that I think we need to focus on. There's a lot of also a lot of questions about the revenue sources for this project. There's a big lot of big question mark there as well. So I mean, my question for your council is, do we feel comfortable with the with this project and all the financial uncertainty before us in front of us? I think we need to have staff kind of come back and really lay that out for us in front of us and say what it really is. Not having measure SS. What what does that say? What does that mean exactly? What is that? What are we looking at losing? We have absolutely, there's absolutely no guarantee that 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 voters were to prove it if it's on the ballot. I think that's, I would like to know, I would like to have a a picture of that and laid out in front of us preferably in the next council meeting if possible.
All right, I want to thanks the council menzo for raising that concerns. However, I believe that this is a time that we discuss about civic center development project. And this project will not have any negative impact on our general fund. For your, you know, for your concerns, I think that 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 would be the you know, the the other concerns that I I believe that we will have to discuss in the future.
Yeah, I just think that how would we look? How would a picture look going forward with this project? And then in the and if the measure SS doesn't can doesn't get approved, how would that go? How would that carry with residents? If we have to start having cuts in services and layoffs? And we're having this big project being built? And we, and I don't know if that would go to 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 well with our residents. And do we really need a new city hall right now? Do we really need one? Do we know, is it falling apart? Is it in in decay? Is it not functioning? And then if we do need other, we do need to come up with revenue. Do we need to expand these revenue sources on this type of project? It's just something that we need to ask ourselves.
All right, any other council member? I hope that, I mean, like when we discuss, I hope that we discuss about the item that on agenda right now rather than we have to raise another concern that's not really relating to the item.
Well, if I may, are you done, Mayor?
Please.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand is that, okay, the timeline, I'm probably going to go from you know, the broader just kind of the broader look of this project. And I think we have the E and A. Is it extended to November, correct, Alexa? Yeah, November?
Yes, it was for one year.
Okay, so okay, so what would need to happen between now and November?
Well, the it depends if if the, when we get to November, so the way the timeline is set up is that by November, if the council wanted to, you could enter into a development agreement. In order to enter into a development agreement, we need to be through the environmental process, SEQA. So the analysis that is associated with the project. So the the timeline was was laid out with the with the idea that by November, we could have, you know, gone through everything we need to go through, identified a project, have a project description. That project description can then go through the SEQA process. We would have, we would have an outcome, you know, whatever it may be. And the council would be able to make a decision at that point. Yes, we would like to move forward into a development agreement. Yes, we're going to, you know, approve this environmental document. That can all happen at the same meeting, but we can't do a development agreement until the SEQA is done.
Okay, so for me, you know, what I see is that we need to be very fair to Mr. Sheldon. And we what we, what I'm saying is that we need to make the decision whether or not we want to move forward to build this new city hall or not. And I think if we continue on, I know we're waiting for a lot of things. And I think there are a lot of things that are pretty delayed, pretty grossly delayed, right? Because I was expecting, I know we were expecting things to, we were expecting the financial feasibility study for one. That's an important one to be done by now, correct? When is that going to be done? Or is it done? Or is it done?
Let me just clarify the question. When you say financial feasibility study, are you talking about the ongoing costs and revenues? Or are you talking about a comparison of the project cost to project revenues?
A cost of a project and the cost of project. I know that's being studied, right?
We have asked for additional information and some pieces of, of information have been provided by the developer. But again, until we have a little more specific on, on the building and the city hall, there's still a lot to be narrowed, narrowed down and delve deeper into with regards to the costs.
Okay, so so besides the SS measure and, you know, all this COVID that's going on, I know this is what we wanted to do back in two thousand seventeen. There's also the question of financial feasibility of the, of the project. And there's a lot of question, a lot of discussion with staff reports and the presentations, which raise a lot of questions about the financial feasibility of the project. And at the minimum, it appears that there are a lot of questions that, that still haven't been answered. And I know there, you know, we're not sure, I don't think we're sure exactly where we're getting this money from. So many things are up in the air. There are many details that we need to know in order for us to focus on how much this project is gonna cost. I don't, I know that we were talking about a tilted building or not, or regular building, the tilted building would cost less and all that, so everything, so therefore we don't know what the cost is. And, and whether or not we will have the funds to be able to build it. And so we need, we really need more information about exactly what is being proposed to be built, what the cost of what we're gonna build and how it will be funded. And so I think we, you know, like I said, this needs to be the finance, the, the financial aspect of it. It's very, very unclear right now. From my understanding, when this project was first proposed, I was, we were told that there's, it's not gonna cost our city anything. So based on so far from the presentation, it sounds like there are a number of ways that your city would have to contribute to this project. And I know that it's not from general funds. But you know, so now we're not sure exactly what the the sale of the, the parking spaces and, and there's no commitment there, so we're I hear numbers like three million, five million, seven point five million. Those numbers have been drawn out there, but nothing definite. I think the college has made it really clear that they have not committed to, to any number and that they need to also go through you know, protocols and to, in order to make that commitment. So there's so, there's still up in the air. So I'm just saying that we are now in March, end of March, April. So what specific financial impacts will this project impose on our city? If we were to decide to proceed? We need to fully understand what are all of the assets and revenues we would be committing towards the construction of this new city hall before we agree to it. Remember, we did this back in two thousand seventeen. So now like two and a half years, three years later. So my recommendation, my feeling is that before we can make further commitments, to be fair to Mr. Sheldon, on this project, I would like to see if we can have the city manager and the finance director give our council a report maybe at the next meeting on the anticipated budget, like a budget forecast for the next two years. Because as we mentioned about, you know. So, so basically, just a forecast for the next two years at the next council meeting, focusing in particular on what the impact would be. We were talking about measure SS, which I agree. Once that is lost, at the same time, at the same meeting, I'd like to see if, like so, you could provide us details on the financial impacts
I don't know them.
On the city from this project, as well as any loss opportunities it might cause. So I'm saying that I know we are in the middle of this, but again, out of respect for Mr. Sheldon, and to be fair to him, we want to make sure our, you know, because the development agreement is in November. And so many things are still pending. And, you know, that, that, that would be my, my request as far as to, if you could, city manager, finance director, and our I won't say your name again, community development director, if you can come back, bring us all that information. Is that reasonable request? That's what I propose.
I'd like to respond be, before the city manager can answer your concerns. I believe that in the presentation that Mr. Sheldon, that he asked that he would be, that he would come back in May with the financial feasibility. And I think in the parking study. So I'd like to continue this item in May. So Mr. Sheldon will show us the financial feasibility as well as the parking study that he will have at a time. And for the E and A, it going to be expire in November. So there will be a few step before I think that the city goes, before the city and Mr. Sheldon reached to the development agreement. So I don't see any, any connection between our city financial circumstance and this project. That is my point.
I see that I, I, what I'm trying to say is that our priorities may change. I want to make sure that our priorities, priorities have not changed. I want to see, I want to take a look at that. And so the sooner the better. If you want to wait until April, okay, we wait until April. But I, I would like staff to do the same. As I said earlier. You know, I'd like to look at where we are today. This is two thousand twenty-one, March. We'd like to, so I'm not gonna repeat that, but that's, that's exactly what, what I think we should do in order to move forward and in order not to waste Mr. Sheldon's time and his resource.
All right, Mr. Sheldon, can you respond? Because you already raised hand.
Can I?
You yourself.
Nobody, can I, can I go back? I'm sorry, Mr. Sheldon, I
Yes.
Forgot to say thank you for for your presentation, for your time. You know, it's a thank you for taking the time and, and sharing with us your, your project. It just, it just, I'm really concerned about our financial future of our city. I understand the mayor's point that one thing doesn't have to do with the other, but I think it does in a way, because we all know how important us getting the measure SS extended by the voters. I just think you know, it doesn't, to me, I think it would be a bad look to say that we're we're here, we're building a bright and shiny little new city hall. And at the same time, we're asking residents to to, you know, increase, promote money for taxes, so sales tax. I don't know if that's a good optics. I don't know if that's a good optics for voters to to be able to, to approve a measure SS extension. So I think it, I think it does come, come into play, the two. We definitely need it. We know our, our, our property tax is low. And we definitely depend on that, that measure SS has saved us. We've been able to increase our police department personnel. We've been able to hire back a lot of, a lot of our staff that got laid off when we lost the redevelopment. So losing, not having that, that, that tax revenue would really put us in a, in a really bad situation. So I think it does, but respectfully, that's my opinion. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sheldon?
Yes, thank you. I, I wanted to comment on the, yeah, I'm, I'm muted. Comment regarding, regarding the revenue. And I, I think council member Ho brings up a very good point, and we need some time to respond. I believe the revenue is there. I think even we, we've done some number crunching, we've looked at some options to present, because this is all about here are the options on how we can get there. We have to be creative. I think we can do this without coastline. And I want, I, I would need some time to be able to put that together to validate numbers and validate what our approach is. I would hope that they would have the wisdom to step up, but I think, you know, and I've always said this, I'll say again, you know, they love the situation that they have. They want the city to do nothing because they have a great deal with, with what they, with what they have with the service parking lot. And, you know, that's, they're gonna need to have some encouragement to step forward. But we can do that possibly without them, and I need time to, to show that if, if that is the situation. So I would, I would thank both of the council member Ho and Mr. Mayor, if we could have that, I'm, that you had suggested. We can come back, I think, with enough time to get really hard financial numbers, because we do need to make some changes to the new, some, some additional information. And there are, and this is, you know, this is always sort of moving when new information comes in. But I think we will have that available to you in the time period that was stated.
May I, may I speak?
Please.
First of all, with due respect to council member Ho, I, I, you certainly can request staff to do that. But I'm not sure that where, whether it is, need to be done at this point. You know, you heard it from Mr. Sheldon, that they are going to have a feasibility, a financial feasibility come back with us in a couple of months. Number, well, and, and at the same time, I don't think that, you know, to answer council member Menzo, I, I think that, you know, I agree with the mayor. We are looking specifically at the, at the civic center development project at this point. We are not, we can't marry the other SS measure with this project. Because, you know, the, this project is not going to touch the general fund. And it's going to be provided, you know, by itself. So I, I would think that, you know, we don't, we don't mix this with that. And at the same time, to be fair with the Sheldon project, i- if I were Mr. Sheldon, I mean, you know, I, I, you know, E and A that we extended for him, you know, for a couple of times for him to, to catch on with this project. And I can tell you that, you know, from the, the presentation that I, I, I see today, it is a, a major improvement. I, I, I could say, you know, from the first or second slide, I can see that, you know, the city and also Sheldon Development work together very well. And, and, and with the new project manager came in, they also worked along very well. And also another study, parking study structure is underway, you know, and available for us on May, you know, probably mid-May. So we, 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 I can see the progress is going on. And, and I'm, I'm excited to see what is, you know, going to be next. So I, I'd rather, you know, let wait for a couple of more months to see the, the parking study complete and to see the, the, the progress that, you know, the, Sheldon presented to us. You know, that, that's what I, 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 I want to, to propose. And at the same time, you know, I totally agree with the, the mayor, that, you know, we, we need to look at this project individually. You know, I understand that you say that, you know, what, what happened with SS measure, we don't know that, that, you know, a year or two year data, data part. And at the same time, we can't stop project, the project right now as it's going, going in. And it's moving along, and now we say, we say we, we need to stop it. I don't think this is the right way to do it, you know, to, to, to Sheldon Development and, and, you know, and to stop everything because of that.
I don't see any connection between like the measure and this project, you know, and I, and I already said, council member Ho.
Yeah, well, the downside of waiting is that Steve will be spending more money. And I think that this is, I'm just saying that, sure, Steve, if you, you know, you continue doing what you're doing. But then our city should be looking at our, our financial situation. This is, we should be looking at it the whole way through. Just to make sure, and as I said, you know, a lot has changed. Okay, our, our financial situation has changed, our priorities have changed, and we should be, we should be looking at that. And, you know, I'm not saying, and, and I'm, I'm just asking for staff to do you know, to take a look at our current situation and present that. The financial feasibility study, that's what we're gonna get and that, that we're gonna get from, from the consultant. So that's a, that's a different matter. But I'm, I'm just saying that we, we, we're, as we're approaching November. Okay. And that would be for the, for, for, for the development agreement. We want to make sure we take a look. That's all I'm saying. We need to take a look to make sure this is what we want to do. And I'm just thinking that if we don't, and we wait until the end, Mr. Develop, Mr. Sheldon, Steve Sheldon is going to be spending a lot of money. You want to be sure, we want to be sure. So at our end, that's what we should do.
Well, council member, if, if if we could provide you some information
To do with Steve, though. It has nothing to do with Steve Sheldon. This is what we have to do for us. That's all. Nothing to do with you. You continue doing whatever you're doing. And you're gonna be waiting for, you know, the parking studies from LSA, and you're waiting for a lot of things. You still continue to do your thing. And the fina- financial feasibility, that's either done or being done, or, you know, you're still gonna do that. This is, I'm asking staff and I'm asking our city manager, our finance director to look inward just to make sure.
Yeah, I believe that Mr. Sheldon understands the nature of the project, that he understands that there, there would be several steps before the city and Sheldon Development reached to development agreement. There will be several steps, and he understands that he, he goes to spend more money. Because, you know, he, he would like to continue the project. So I think that, I mean, I, I, I believe the city have to be fair to him because the E and A will be expired in November. So right now it's only March. And I so I already mentioned that Mr. Sheldon, he understands the nature of the project. Am I right?
Yes.
So any other question or, or concern?
So let me, let me, let me reaffirm this. With the concern that, that council member Ho and Menzo brought up. And then especially that they, they, they have a concern for you to spend more money as we continue with this project. Is that the concern? Is that the concern for you, uh, uh, to continue the work that, that outline in front of you? And the deadline is for you, uh, for the E N A is by November. Do you concerned about it, or you, 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 you want us to, to look into that? Mr. Sheldon.
We think this is a great project, and we would like to push forward, and we recognize our risk, and we will take that and, and, and deliver you an outstanding project.
All right, thank you. You know, I, I looked at the um. The revenue, um, proposed revenue for twenty-five thousand square feet, uh, City Hall. I mean, you know, the um. With all the revenue, uh, talking about the C F D. And talking about quieting, uh, parking rights for Coastal Community College. For five million dollars, and then other grants, you know, these are graded financings, uh, to support the project. And it's just a very abstract. If you look at it, you know, who, who gonna, who gonna collecting the C F D? Is that the city responsibility, or is it, is your responsibility, uh, Mr. Sheldon?
No, that's not the city's responsibility, uh. That would be done, um, as a part of typical, uh, the tax, the, the, the treasure tax collector for the county would be collecting. The special assessment of the taxes. Um, currently in Westminster, there's a couple of special assessments already on your tax roll. And those are paid when you pay your semi-annual taxes, public taxes, and that's collected at that time, and is. They have, now they go pay their bills, and it would not involve the city.
Okay, but the city council have a pass to approve that, uh, uh, C F D, right, is that correct?
N- n- no, no council member, the city council would not, um, need to vote to pass the C F D.
Okay, and then the issue, you know, we talked about this last year, um, we discussed this, and it's just. The same issue, Coastline still maintain that they not interesting, paying five million dollars. To finance, uh, to acquire, you know, a certain number of parking spaces, right? So it's still, they still denying it, they say, hey, you know, we're not gonna do it, we don't have money to do it. And then now, you know, we have park grants and naming rights and all that stuff. Throw into this pile of.
Those are good questions, and I can give you some more information on that. Coastline about, I think it was ten years ago, put into their bond measure that they wanted to, that they had three, to, to allocate. Three million dollars for the acquisition of surface parking, and they, and they were at that time, were hoping to purchase. I believe it was a city's, uh, library property or one of the county properties that, that they'd been informed of that. And that's why they had done that dollar amount for service parking, but that, um, within their bond measure, that. Funds could, could likely be utilized for the parking structure, or we could work with them to have some type of a. Of, of a way to have that work, so that's, I think the three million is a minimum, th- that, that is there. Um, they have that allocated in their, in their bond, and bond dollars are different than their general fund dollars. Well, I, I, I think that's a definite number, I think that number can only go up from there.
Yeah, I, I heard what you're saying, but I, how do we gonna have them commit to that, uh, dollar amount? We're gonna twist our arm?
And, you know, it's, it's the air of inevitability. They need, and when they believe it's inevitable, it's going forward. And they need to get on this train, because if they don't get on it, where are they gonna get their parking? So I think we are, it's up to us to find a way to do it without coastline. And I think, and I believe we can, we're gonna come back to that information. And then Coastline's gonna need to really sit up in their chair and realize that they need to step up and do the fair thing, they need to provide parking for students. Every one of their campuses has parking. You know, they, they spent fifteen million dollars on their initial campus, they spent another three million dollars. To expand their student lounge here, here, uh, at this campus. They spend a lot of money, and I won't go into all the other things that they spend money on, so they have, they have the money, I think it just. This is the process, um, council member, and we just have to work through the process and. Be prepared to do that without them, which I think we can do.
So, okay, I, I hear what you're saying, so basically, we have the wood pressure on them. And uh, who gonna be responsible to, to make them sign a contract and, and, and pay that amount of money? Is that gonna be the city, or is it gonna be, uh, your company, sir?
Uh, we're not gonna make them, I think, when they see that this can be done without them, they're gonna be knocking on our door, in my opinion. Uh, but ultimately, we were negotiating, to answer your second part of your question, we were negotiating with Coastline, I think we should can, that Sheldon Development should. Continue to do that, um, I, I would like the council to, uh, maybe, um, add that assignment to us. I, I think, if they could do that this evening, that would be great, so that I could come back with some more information. To you on, on this issue.
Okay, so, hey, uh, let's say that Coastline say, okay, no, we're not gonna pay. No, we're not gonna quiet those parking spaces. Could you have a plan B to finance, uh, this development?
Yes, we're working, we, we, this is. This is an issue that, that, that has come up in the past month or two or three months, and we've been working on it, we, and we believe we have that, yes, and that's the information that we're gonna be. Getting, getting back to the council on in May. We could provide some preliminary information sooner, I'd be happy to sit down with you and show you what I'm talking about. Um, this is, um, I, I made a mistake, and I answered a question at a meeting back in November on. Negoti- on conversations that I was having with Coastline, so I think this is a closed session item. Because you, you would be in negotiation of pricing terms with Coastline, and. It should be kept at that level, but I'd be happy to share information i- if, if you're interested.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a couple of clarifying points?
Please.
Um, uh, to answer the question regarding it's, it's the parking structure. Uh, it's city-owned property, so the city would have to enter into that agreement.
Right.
Take care of that, and regarding the community facilities district, uh, those districts are formed by the city. And the special tax is imposed by the city. So it is, uh, definitely an action that would be needed to, would need to go through the city council and be approved.
Do you mean that, like, uh, the city would have to, uh. Have the meeting with Coastline regarding the issue of parking, am I right? Is that what you mean?
Uh, ultimately, it's the city property, so they would, you would be the party to the contract.
So if, if that is the case, so I'd like to ask our city attorney to do so.
M- Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, clarify. Of course, the city would be the signatory to the contract, um, that is, uh, different than negotiating the contract. That's all that I meant to say, of course, that they would be the signatory. Um, as it relates to the C F D, there is the statewide joint powers authority that I referenced earlier. And I think staff have looked, in this program, they have called the skip program, that, that, that's an acronym, and. The city joins the skip program, and there's no further action after that. There's no, um, city issuing of the C F D, it's all done through this other entity.
Well, that's, that's two different programs that we're discussing here, so the community facilities district is formed by the city. The skip program is, uh, a statewide bond program that. Uh, developers can take advantage of, uh, it has some. Uh, financing advantages, because you don't have to individually in. Uh, issue bonds, so there are some cost savings if you go that route. Uh, but at the end of the day, the city still has to approve. The use of the skip funds, and it ends up at the same point, which is. The particular homeowners involved will be paying an additional tax payoff bonds, whether they be C F D bonds or skip bonds.
You know, I, for me, I really don't like the use of this skip program. Now, we never talk about any skip program or any special tax before. And I really don't think it's fair to the homeowners in this area. Um, to be pay, paying for our civic, our new city hall, our civic center. Um, this is supposed to be. This was not, was, this was not what we agreed to. And then the coastline thing, if you're gonna, you could finalize that, figure out, we're getting. Anything, we're getting three, we're getting five, we're getting seven point five. Um. And then now we, I heard about the police, what is it? Money bond, leftover bond, or bond funds, or something like that, what's that called?
We were calling them the residual bond fund, bond proceeds, yes.
Yeah, we never heard. Or also, and now we're hearing that, and so all I'm asking is that this is all about money. Okay, all about money, so looking at money, where, where you're getting from. Where you're getting the money from, it's all up in the air, and selling naming rights and things like that, that's. Very creative, but again, these are not money that's there. Um. And so that's, those are the issues that would concern Steve Sheldon. And your company, but then that's, that's done, I don't know if we need to continue to talk to Mr. Sheldon. But what I wanted to ask staff to do was, now this part was looking internally. Looking more towards our, you know, us, what we wanna do, we should be reassessing. Where we wanna look internally to see where are we at? You know, do we want to be asking for this S S measure, is it important to us? Yes, and I think we agreed, I, I don't know, um. I know that the, this money is important. And um, now we've got COVID on top of that. Um, this has, I'm sorry, this does not concern Mr. Sheldon, it's his, you, you just, you can. Close your ears and be, can, you know, continue, continue on with doing whatever it is you're doing, I'm not stopping to do that. This is what I'm asking our staff, our city manager, our finance director, our. Community development director to do, to see if we are going to be. Is this a, something that, you know, don't tell us where to look, this is what, if we decide to look here and. As part of our assessment, as part of our. Plan to go forward. Then, you know, that's what we, that's what we need to do, and that's the right thing to do, okay? Because if we're gonna be building this nice and shiny new building, and then we go knock on our doors and asking for people to. Please give us the extra one percent sales tax. Now, we're going to be able to do that, or maybe we don't need the sales tax measure. You know, I believe we do, and then maybe there's COVID, and I don't even know what effect it has. Um, I know that we. Were short, um. Some three hundred thousand, I'm only doing this by memory. But that was, um. That reflected only, what, two quarters or something like that, but we just don't know. And so I'm asking at this time, and I'm asking staff to do that. So whatever it is we gotta do, it's, number one is I do not like that skip program. The special tax I do not like. Come up with another idea, and that should be your part, and that's what you should be doing, but there's gotta be money that's clearly there. It cannot be, okay, we're going to plan on doing some creative financing. But it will be there, that's not, I don't know if that's good enough. And, and then, of course, the proceeds from the sales. Of, um. Of the land, and it's not eight acres, it's four and a half acres, correct?
Yes.
And, uh, the residual, now what I really am. I, you know, I actually have said it a few times, it's like, early on, we did talk about all of the pieces of. All of the parcels, including, you know, county parcels, we're not looking at just our parcels. So it would have been a bigger piece, and you would get a lot more proceeds from that. So I don't know what happened there, but that would. Be where your money would be coming from, had you been able to do that. So, but I don't like, again, I don't like the special tax, and I don't like this. Um. What is it, the, uh, all these things, naming rights, and then our police, um, bonds, residual funds that we have left. That, that isn't, I'm not sure what else would we, what would we be doing with that money, using that money for? What are some of the things that we, we could be using the money for?
Um, I don't know that I could just come up with too much off the top of my head, but, but I. Do know that we, we have been utilizing some of the funds for different kinds of upgrades and, um, uh, systematic type of things in, in, in the P D building.
But that would be prerogative, what we wanna use for.
Yes.
No, I just don't feel comfortable about using, I mean, that's news to me, I've not heard that we. Were going to use that money towards this project, and then the skip program, I, I just don't like that. So, um, and again, that, those three things I'm talking about. The special tax, the, you know, coastline, the police funds and things like that, that involves. Steve Sheldon Development, come up with something else. Um, but I'm, I'm asking staff to look, we, we have the right to look. You know, from within, to see if we wanna do this, and, you know, we, this is the time, so. I'm just saying, maybe nothing change after that, that's all I'm saying, so, I don't know what the argument is about.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with Councilwoman Ho on, on, on what she's saying, uh. I also don't feel comfortable with that tax on, on, on those property owners to pay for something. That they're not getting direct benefit from, and then, as y'all know, at the end. The, 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 the cost always gets passed on to the consumer, so if you raise. Have Coastline, i- if, if, and, let's say hypothetically, they did pay money into it, then. They're gonna just pass that cost on to the students, um, to recover that. Um, somebody's gonna pay for it, it's not free money. Um, I don't feel comfortable with that either, and. We just, just like Councilwoman Ho said, we need to look into our internal situation. And the picture has changed. From twenty seventeen to now. Um, our financial situation has changed, uh. Um, if measure S S would have been extended, this would have been a totally different conversation. A totally different picture, but that's not what's in front of us now, and. Um, what's in front of us now is the big uncertainty. Uh, for our financial situation, and I think, like I said before. I think optics is really important. You know, the last thing, I mean, we definitely need that. It's no secret that we need that S S extended for, for our, for us to be able to keep doing what. The good things our city has been doing ever since that measure S S went in effect. And I think the last thing we need is for, for us to be building a shiny new building and. That measure not pass, and then, we had, we're gonna have a new building, but we're gonna have less people to put in it. We're gonna lay off people and, uh, shiny new building and nobody, nobody to put in it to go to work. I think that's an internal question that we have amongst ourselves. Um, I appreciate Mr. Sheldon's, um. Hard work and effort, but I think this is a different question that doesn't have anything to do with, with his project. At all, um, whether his project is, is, it works or don't work, uh, as far as. Um, you know, quality, what it, that, that has nothing to do with. With Councilwoman Ho and I are talking about. Um, we need to look into our internal self, see if that's something that we can even. Uh, afford to do it, it seems to me that it's like Robin Peter to pay Paul kind of situation. We're trying to find hidden dollars, that money that actually we don't have. To, to try to spend it. I mean, it's kinda like your home thing, it's like, you kind of general rule, don't spend money you don't have, so. I mean, it's kind of like your home thing is like, you kind of general rule, don't spend money you don't have, so. If you don't have it, then don't spend it, you're gonna get in debt. So, um, um, I, I agree with Councilwoman Ho, we need to direct staff to uh, help us out and give us a, a, a picture of what we're looking at with our financial situation. So whatever we need to do to make that happen, we need to do it.
All right, I think that, uh, Mr. Sheldon, you know, we already heard other concerns from member of the city council and he already committed, uh, you know, in a situation that coastline did not want to have the meeting or did not want to engage, you know, in a project. Uh, he will be responsible, right? For the funding, I believe. Because he, uh, already mentioned that earlier. And I have a question for Mr. Sheldon. So do you think that you will have financial feasibility in, in the end of May?
Yes.
All right. So, uh, I'd like to make motion that we will continue, uh, you know, this project in the second meeting in May. And at a time, uh, Mr. Sheldon will provide us with parking study and financial feasibility. And that is, that is my motion.
You know, I would like to make a comment. You know, I totally understand, um, you as a developer, uh, Mr. Sheldon, you are into making money. Totally understand. Not, it's not a problem. Um, but my concern is only real money we're looking at is the, the, the sale of the land. Four point two five acres of a CD land for about eight and a half million dollars. That, that's a real money, okay? The rest of creative financing is not real money, it's not there. So, uh, my concern is, you know, if you're going forward, uh, breaking down the city hall and we start moving to some trailer or whatever, you know, temporary city hall that we're gonna have, while the new one being built. And then halfway, um, for whatever reason, financially cannot sustain and continue the, uh, this development project and we're gonna end up with, uh, nothing. Uh, with, uh, an empty lot uh, and a bunch of trailer. And that's my concern, so. I, I totally understand what you're trying to do. I understand that, but my, that's my concern. The only real money right now to fund the project is the, the money that generate from the land itself. That's it. That's my comment.
I could just say that you have a great, you have a great city manager and a great city attorney and they're not gonna let that happen. I'm not gonna do that either. There's, uh, a process put in place that will not, that that will not occur.
What is, what is the motion on the floor right now?
The motion that we will continue, uh, the we will continue to update of the project in, in the second meeting of May. And at a time, Mr. Sheldon will provide us parking study and financial feasibility.
Well, I'd like to make a substitute motion to see if I can, as I said earlier, is that I would like the city manager, the finance director and the community development director to bring me the information I talked about. Just the anticipated budget forecast for the next two years and just to focus on the impact that the SS measure might have on us if we don't have it anymore. So once, so I've already said that. Do I need to repeat?
Yeah, let me, let me jump in here just for a quick second. So the mayor made a motion. Let's first see if he's got a second to that motion. And then, and then we'll address your substitute motion. So is there a second to the mayor's motion?
Yes, I second the, the, the motion to, uh, the mayor. Simply because I, I think that, uh, it, we already have commitment from their, uh, Sheldon Development that they are going to provide us the status, uh, the feasibility, uh, financial feasibility and also the complete of, uh, the parking study structure and then the milestone. So I, I, I guess, you know, those are the things that we need to uh, based on to make a decision, you know, to make our decision for the next step. So I think it, it, it would be enough for us to go, to, to, to move from there, whether they, uh, whether the information that going to present by, uh, Mr. Sheldon in May, it's going to get us to going forward or it's going, it's going to kill us, uh, right there. So I second that motion.
Okay, so there, so there's a second on that. So now I heard that Councilmember Ho wanted to bring a substitute motion. And that was to come back at the next meeting to have staff provide uh, financial information about the tax and about the impacts of the project on the city in terms of money that would be spent. I, I think that's what I heard there is. Is there a second to that, uh, substitute motion?
I, I second it.
Okay, so.
The, the impact of, of SS, the, the, if it's not there, correct?
That was my understanding.
Remember, I, as I said, everything's still going on. Whatever Mr. Sheldon is doing, he's still doing, correct?
So, so what I'm just, understand right now is there are two different issues. One issue is, one motion is for internal review, internal, uh, internal review to see where we are. The other motion is to continue with the, uh, development that's going on because the ENA is going to expire in November.
We're not stopping the ENA. The ENA is still going on and it's still going on.
Okay, so, so.
With you understood, Christian?
Yes, the ENA, uh, goes through November.
Uh, yeah.
The November of this year.
How come we, you know, in low measure SS? I don't understand.
What's our concern that, that, um, this project would jeopardize the voter approval of, of, that's my concern is that uh, the optics of it, in my view, is I think we're gonna have a hard time, um, with the voters, you know, and we have to, you know, you know how important it is, the SS, and he's gonna, he's gonna have a hard time. The optics with this project going forward, they walk us, they aren't, we don't need the money. We have monies to spend. Now, why should we renew it? So, I mean, I think me, my personal view is the optics is not, not good. Uh, we definitely don't know the future of our businesses. How many of them are gonna survive? I think we need to, uh, make sure that we're, we're gonna be able to survive and and we're gonna have a Plan A and Plan, a Plan, a backup in case, we need to, uh, find monies to survive. I mean, all these, all these, um, as far as the, the parking, selling parking, selling, uh, park, park rights. I mean, if, if we're in trouble, do you want to use that money for this or do we need to use parking to survive for something else? What if, you know?
I just wanna make, if you're done, um, want to be able to see the whole project as a whole. I wanna see, I wanna look within and like I said, what this, what I'm asking is for us to, to look at. It has nothing to do with Mr. Sheldon, he continues with his ENA, for us to be able to look from within. Okay, and that you're trying to, you, you don't understand why?
Okay, Councilmember.
Why I want to, I want to do that and you disagree, that's okay. So we do have, um.
No, Councilmember Ho, can I, can I respond to that? I understand your concern and, and also a Councilmember in Menzo. And it is internal because it's involved with the SS measure and our orders, um, you know, of funding. I would recommend is if you could uh, go ahead and, you know, uh, uh, put it on agenda, agenda this item at the time that we have, uh, AB one, two, three, four. That way it's all internal to us. And we are talking about this project right now. We just decide for this project to move on, as you mentioned.
If, if I may remind you, as I asked staff earlier, we are for five point one, we are basically, there is no decision to be made. It says subject is, we're just updating, they're just updating.
Yeah, there is, um. This information.
It's just information. There's no, we're not stopping the project with, this is just information, I'm that's all, that's all I'm saying. So we do have a motion, a substitute motion.
So, C D Attorney, let me ask you, if this is, if we are talking about the, the, um, certain developments, civic center development projects, should we make a decision for this project or should we go ahead and marry with the other one? What I recommend is that, you know, I, I think that C, uh, Councilmember Ho and Councilman, um, Menzo has a point there, but I, I would think that it, you know, we can put it at agenda for the next meeting, you know, for, uh, when, when we do AB one, two, three, four. That's two separate issues. Because I don't want to marry their, the, you know, all orders, source of funding like SS measure into this. It's totally different. It's no connection there, as the mayor said. There is, he, he see no connection between the SS measure and this, uh, standalone project.
Um, C D Attorney on the, on the, says provide direction on the recommendation from staff. Is this considered direction? Councilwoman Ho's, uh, motion?
Yeah, I, I, I defer to the council on this. Um, really what's being, you know, a presentation has been made about the project, uh, and it's, it's up to you what information you need, what additional information you need. So if what I'm hearing is that you want to hear more information about the impacts of measure SS on this and, and the impacts of the project on the city. And that would help you to make a decision here with respect to, is this a good idea or not? These are the things I'm hearing. So I, I defer to the council on, if you think this is an important thing to do, then then you are entitled to ask for that, so.
Well, I asked for that and it's just about getting right.
Yeah, we have a motion and a substitute motion in a second um, on the floor, so.
Could, could you, uh, repeat the, uh, substitute motion again, please?
Someone please repeat.
I could, I could try to summarize it. What I heard was that, uh, the motion is that, uh, Councilmember Ho wa- asked that we would, uh, come back at the next meeting, the very next meeting and staff would provide information on the, the status of SS and its, uh, the impacts on the city and how that might affect this project. And also financial impacts, other financial impacts of this project uh, on the city. I, you know, the sale of the parking spaces, how much money is involved? How does that impact the city? I think that's what I'm hearing, if you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And it would be at the next meeting.
I didn't want to ask for anything else simply because I know everything else is coming. April or May or something like that. So this is the part that we haven't asked for. Okay.
Oh, okay, so the, if, uh, feasible, um, study gonna be automatically submitted by so we don't have to worry about?
There, there's a consultant who does that, correct? And I know that's being done or is it done? Is it complete? But it hasn't been presented. But that, that's why that part I'm not even asking for. I know that's being done.
The, the, the point that, um, the mayor and I argue with about is, you know, the SS, we, we can't mix the, uh, SS measure into this project. That's, that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
You, you can request, uh, add, add and dice when it's turn, your, your turn to, to say what AB one, two, three, four. You can ask for that. You still have it next meeting.
I believe Christian made it clear why I'm asking for that. Do you want to, could, Christian, could you repeat it for me?
Well, as, as I understand it, at the end of the meeting, if you want to add an item, that's typically for something that's not being discussed. This is kind of an item that's on the agenda, which is this project. And, and what I'm hearing is that you're making a motion to analyze the finances related and how it would impact on this project.
Right.
So that's why, I, I think it would be appropriate to deal with things, dealing with this subject during the discussion of this subject. So if it was something totally different, then yes, you would bring it at the end of the meeting.
Yes, it's still relating to this project. But it is the SS measure or it is whatever it is, you know, I stated earlier. So, um, I don't know why you're fighting it. It's just, um.
Oh, I don't see it's right. That's why I'm fighting it.
And it might be more information than you need. So you don't need to look at it, if, if it's, when it's presented. But, um, you know, at least it's there and if I need to look at it, I'll look at it and the rest of you don't want to look at it, that's fine. Correct? Could we vote? I think we.
All right, so, uh, we have the motion and the second for substitute motion.
Yes, we have a substitute motion on the floor, um, made by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Councilmember Menzo. Roll call, vote. Councilmember Do.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Menzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
No.
And Mayor Ta?
No.
Okay, that motion carries three to two with Vice Mayor Nguyen and Mayor Ta voting no.
All right, so, uh, for this, uh, project that, uh, I believe that, that Mr. Sheldon still need to submit parking study and financial feasibility. And staff will continue to give us an update. Am I right? C D Attorney?
That's correct.
Okay.
We will continue.
All right. All right, so, uh, next we have common and request for agenda items from City Council, agency members, including AB one, two, three, four report when required. Uh, who, who would like to go first? Vice Mayor?
Uh, the meeting is long enough. I think we have enough to, uh, uh, on our plate to discuss, so, uh, it's I have nothing to, to, to say today. I'm done for today.
All right, uh, Councilmember Ho?
Yes, um, I, first of all, I want to, I would like to, um, express my condolences to the people in Atlanta, both of Colorado for the lives lost and the, um, crime victims, um, that, you know, we, um, luckily, you know, we, I mean, for us in our city, we, um, we, um, I don't hear, um, much of that going on, thank, thankfully. So I'd like to, um, just want to, for us to keep them in the, in our prayers and, uh, continue to pray for peace. And, um, in regards to the life's loss, uh, from COVID nineteen, um, I'd like to, um, hopefully we can all get vaccinated and those of us who haven't, you know, it's really incredible. Um, I keep hearing every day. Um, tonight I heard, um, it was a pretty sad day today that I heard. Um, tonight, I heard um, it was a pretty sad day today that I heard a of the leader, um of um, one of the leaders in our community just passed away from COVID and that's just quite sad. So I like to remind everybody to please um get vaccinated when it comes to your turn and there's a chance, and that's a reminder for myself as well. And in terms of our agenda, I don't really uh have anything to add. Um, and I already added that one agenda, which is thank you very much, uh staff, for working on the A D U. Um, I think we are very glad we put that one to bed. And um, thank you for everything you've done on all of, these are very big um agenda and I can't uh imagine the time and effort that it took for you all to work on it and put it all together. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Do?
Thank you very much, Mayor Ta. Um you know, it's a um it's uh more and more um people has been telling me that they, it's easier to get vaccinated nowadays since the federal government also the stick, a step in and take over the uh COVID nineteen uh vaccine. So um again, it's a, they really encourage everyone uh to go out and get vaccinated. Um, I'm excited to uh to hear that uh the reopening gonna be uh they're gonna move our county to the next level. Uh so hopefully, uh you know, the uh uh reopening is gonna bring more uh businesses to the city. It's gonna help all the businesses. Uh this is, it's been a a long uh twelve months, so I have a question for the C D Attorney, I'm sorry, City Manager. Uh, do we need the council approval to extend it, the outdoor commerce, activity, dining commerce uh after the opening? Just in case that uh, you know, um, COVID has some contagious disease gonna hit the our nation once again.
I, I could probably.
A lot, a lot, a lot of investing, a lot of uh money uh for outdoor, you know, commerce and all that stuff. I'm gonna go ahead.
Go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, we've, we've been pretty liberally just a- administratively extending them. Um, you gave us the the authority to do that with, with the process that we have for temporary permits. So right now, everyone is extended through the end of March and and we can go through and extend everyone further. That's we don't need council approval.
Okay, cool. That's a, I'm very happy to hear that because we don't know, you know, when it's gonna shut down again. It's just, it's just gonna happen, it's a matter of days, you know, not hours, so.
It's been unpredictable.
It's very unpredictable. So we we want, we just, we just wanna reserve a, we have a game plan to continue to support the the business in the city. But that's, that's a very good, happy to do that. Um, just wanna thank staff. I mean, we will continue to um work hard and serve the residents of this great city. So, oh, thank you very much and good night, everyone. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Menzo?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I concur with Councilwoman Ho as far as um the, the tragedies that happened in Atlanta and in Colorado. Um, hopefully, maybe um I'll ask the mayor if he can close adjourn tonight's meeting in their, in their memory. Um, I also wanna let everybody know that the the Westminster P D homeless outreach team, the task force, community members, faith-based groups um got together yesterday and uh and started um speaking about our homeless, homeless uh issues and the police chief was there, homeless liaison officer Perez was there, deputy chief Upstil, our city manager Marwan was there. Um it was a lot of community um involvement. It was a lot of residents there, which was, I was glad to see. There was in some topics of really important topics that were brought up and and I'm hoping that we can tackle this issue and with their help, come up with some, some help and some solutions to this to this issue. Um, I don't know if um our city manager wants to say anything on the topic. But um he was there and I thank him for being there, taking time out of his day to be there. I mean, same for the police chief, Campos. Um, so very, very positive meeting. I was glad to see everybody there. So um, I don't know if uh city manager have any words for that or?
Yes, I'll, I'll just say, I'll just say a few words for that. Again, uh good evening, every mayor and council. I believe the, the meeting went very well. Uh we had many members of the committee, community. They appreciated the presence of us in there. That kinda indicated how serious we are taking this matter. And uh they thanked us for being there and they, we set up even the next meeting about a month from now. And uh they, they, they said that this is an indication how serious the city is taking this matter. Then I'll, I'll refer to the police chief to continue, say a few words on that too.
Yes, uh thank you, Mr. City Manager, uh mayor and fellow city council members and staff. Uh just another example, the homeless outreach meeting yesterday uh evening as to the historical level of continued public outreach that I see from the city of Westminster to the community. And it was just a, an endearing example of a partnership between local government and nonprofit and citizens in the community wanting to give it a, a try to try to impact this issue of homelessness. A wonderful example of Westminster at its best. Thank you.
Thank you, uh thank you, um Chief Campos and City Manager. Yeah, so I wanna thank everybody that was there. And I also thank staff. It's, it's been a long night. Um, I don't have harder drive, so I feel for you guys, have to drive home from, from, you guys have a drive, but I really appreciate all you guys' is uh all you guys' help. Um, you guys definitely, I know I keep saying that, it sound like a broken record. But I definitely do, do not take it for granted, wha- what you guys do. Um, you know, I, I know, I see it. I see your work ethic. And and uh you can't teach that. You, you have it, you don't. And and you guys definitely have it. So thank you very much for all, all your hard work.
Thank you.
So. Thank you.
All right, thanks uh all the members of City Council and the staff for really, really patient and wanna thanks your dedication right now, eleven oh forty seven P M is kind of midnight, but we still here. Uh, I appreciate that. So I'd like to thanks uh all the staff, especially that who been uh helping our seniors for uh register for the vaccine and uh new delivery. So uh that really, that really show the community that our city, we really care for everyone, especially for our senior. I wanna thanks our police officer for working really hard. I know that uh we still in the pandemic, but officer, I believe that they work above and beyond. And I'm really proud that, especially our uh Chief of Police, he really, really positive. I had a, I had honor to work with him before and now every time I see him, I always see that uh he's, he's always smiling and really motivated. So uh you really make a difference for our police department. Really appreciate that, Chief.
Thank you.
And uh I uh agree with uh all the House members. So I'd like to adjourn the meeting in uh remembrance of the victim in the uh shooting incident in Georgia. Uh, and I also want to honor uh police officer, law enforcement for their dedication and sacrifices in uh serving the community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So uh the next uh regular meeting will be on Wednesday, April, April fourteen, twenty twenty one, at seven P M. Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.